We determined the eagle had serious injuries that needed immediate attention.
They could see that the wing was not lifting, that side was not lifting when she was trying to fly. And so that was an indication there was a problem in that left wing. And I could also see that she was drooping from the shoulder.
Shoemaker is keeping an eagle eye on Trust as she recovers from her fracture. And because of the quick thinking of a couple of residents and Officer Gill, Trust is making a good recovery so far.
Appetite's improving, and I think the internal bleeding is resolving.
I just took that one. If nobody had called her in, we would never have known, and she probably would have died in the woods. Thank God for citizens, you know, calling in and saying, "I saw, I saw this, you know, injured animal, please somebody come out, you know, and rescue her."
It's not certain she will fly again. That determination will be made within the next couple of months. But in the meantime, Officer Gill will treasure this moment in her career and hopes that the day will come that Trust will soar like an eagle again.
She's a representative of our country, you know, and I think she's just a wonderful reminder of who we are. So she's really just a special creature.
To find out more about the work of the center or to make a donation, visit their website at owlmoon.org. With that, we close this edition of County Report this week. Remember to like us on Facebook and to join us again at this time every week for a look at what's going on inside Montgomery County. I'm Sonia Burke. Thank you for watching.
at the exhibitors. Green Fest has activities for all ages and interests. Make sure you stop by on April 30th and explore your path to a greener life.
I'm not sure I'm... There I am. I'm on now, right? Okay. Great. Terrific. All right. The City Council was just meeting in a closed session with the police chief to discuss some crime matters and ongoing investigations. So we are now coming back together. Thank you for waiting a few moments. Just to make a couple of notes about the... Some upcoming council meetings. We will not be meeting next week, so there will be no council meeting next Wednesday. But don't worry, because in April, we will have two council meetings a week. Our first council meeting in April will be on April 6th. We will be starting that council meeting at 6:30 and doing a tour of library exterior options for renovation. So for folks in particular who would like to attend the meeting on April 6th, we will meet outside near the library, and we will be looking at where some of the options that the architect has put together might be laid out. So that will be 6:30 on April 6th. The regular council meeting will begin at 7:30, and it's budget night. The city manager will present her budget at 7:00, starting around 7:30. We will then have a reading of the second reading ordinance requiring registration of vacant properties, establishing a vacant property maintenance and security standards. We have the first reading this evening. And then we're tentatively scheduled to have a discussion of Tacoma Junction redevelopment process committee and appointment process. As people may remember, last week when NDC was here, they proposed the idea of having a committee of residents to help throughout the process. We did a straw vote on the council and asked the staff to please put together some recommendations for what that committee may look like. And so we are tentatively scheduled to discuss that on April 6th. Monday, April 11th, we have a budget work session starting at 7:30. And then on Wednesday, April 13th, we will have a meeting at 6:30 with the residents of... Members of the police pension board. We'll be meeting with them at 6:30 before the regular meeting at 7:30. During the regular meeting on April 13th, we will start with a public hearing on the budget. So that's April 13th, a public hearing on the budget. And we will also have a public hearing on the plastic bag ban that we discussed a few weeks ago. So two public hearings on April 13th. The work sessions that evening that are tentatively scheduled is a discussion of the proposed library design, tentative discussion of the proposed revisions to the community grants program. We will start that conversation this evening. And also a tentative discussion of the franchise agreement with Comcast and the MOU with Montgomery County. That will then take us Monday, April 18th, we will have another budget work session. And then on Wednesday, April 20th, we will have a public hearing regarding the Streetscape manual. And a work session tentatively scheduled to review options for LED conversion of streetlights in Tacoma Park. Monday, April 25th, we will have our budget work session as budget reconciliation that evening. And then on April 27th, we have two public hearings, one on the constant yield tax rate and another public hearing on our FY 2017 budget. During our regular meeting, we will have the first reading ordinance amending the code for the ban on plastic bags. And then tentatively scheduled, we have a first reading ordinance approving the franchise agreement with Comcast. And tentatively scheduled, a resolution amending the community grants program. And tentatively scheduled, a resolution providing for appointments to committees. And that will take us to the end of April. Looking at tonight's agenda, we will have first public comments on voting items, followed by general public comments. And then, knowing that there was a great interest in commenting on the Tacoma Junction redevelopment, we asked that folks who have comments regarding that to do them all together at the... When we have calls for public comments on Tacoma Junction redevelopment. So right now, I'd like to start with public comments on voting items. We have four voting items this evening. The first is a first reading ordinance requiring the registration of vacant properties and establishing vacant property maintenance and security standards. Is there anyone who has a comment on that? If you do, please come to the microphone. You have three minutes for public comments on our first voting item. Mr. Lovelace, do you have a comment on our first voting item?
Yeah.
Okay. We will get you the microphone.
Yes, my name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. And one thing I'd like to mention about the abandoned buildings is I'd like to see us use a better word than blighted. A lot of people take that word as racist and referring to the poor and remind people of ghetto, ghetto, ghetto. And I don't like that. I think we should use a word like dilapidated or rundown. Something like that would be a more... More lesser racial than the word blighted. And blighted, by the way, means diseased anyway, so it's not really an accurate... An accurate phrase to use. So please, that's my comment. I'd like to see a better word than blighted used on the... When we talk about rundown and dilapidated or abandoned buildings. That would be more appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on our first reading? Yes, go ahead.
Columbia Avenue. I just wanted to briefly commend the council and particularly city staff for their undertaking of this work. I've emailed some of the folks privately, but I think it is worth saying publicly that as someone who lives next to one of these properties, the creation, the mapping, the work that's been done thus far, the creating of the paper trail and standards by which to judge objectively which properties are, whatever term you want to use after Mr. Lovelace's comments, is helpful regardless of whether or not the city or the county can take action depending on various situations. I just want to encourage the council to continue on this path. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments on our first voting item this evening? Our second voting item this evening is the second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park code regarding stormwater management fee system. Are there any comments regarding that? Then we'll move on. Our third voting item this evening is the second reading ordinance authorizing a 2016 budget amendment number three. Any public comments on that? Our fourth voting item this evening is a second reading ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended agreement with the law firm of Bregman, Berbret, Schwartz, and Gilde. Any comments on that?
Ian Barclay, Cedar Avenue. And I have said something in the past about the inordinate fees that are being spent on this sale. And I hearken back to what John Ursiolo said, who manages the property directly across from the co-op, when this subject was first brought up of the sale. And he admonished the council not to sell the property because of the need for parking. And that lot also gets used for numerous other temporary uses, the Fourth of July, the Christmas tree sale, just things like that. And we need places that are vacant like this for occasionally when major operations are going on, like streets and repaving and things like that. The lot down there at Jackson and East West Highway has been used numerous times. And I see the fellows trying to sell that lot. But if you don't have vacant space like that periodically throughout, then you're not going to have the ability to do the kind of work and do it efficiently. So I would hearken back to Mr. Ursiolo's. But more to the point, the fees are... Just seems to be these attorney fees. I looked up a contract in the Black's Law Dictionary, and the contract's a meeting of the minds. And it seems like... Brian Kenner is not here to defend himself, so I won't put it on Brian, but it seems like this wholesale got rushed. And that's the necessity for all this back and forth between attorneys. And it hearkens back to the old tale of the two farmers fighting over the cow. And the one's pulling on the head and the other's pulling on the tail. And no... Disrespect to Mr. Karashi here, but the lawyers are in the middle getting the milk and cream. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace.
I'm Jim D. Luigi. And I've been part of these various committees. But I think this is premature, what you're trying to do here. You're wasting money that the city is intent on obviously getting for the property, but why waste it on legal fees at this point? You need a negotiation process. You need someone between the proposed developer and the co-op. You've had trained... We have trained mediators in this city. They haven't been utilized. Now, you've asked for the co-op and the developer to work together, but you haven't provided a process to do that. Attorney's the worst process to try to do that, the absolute worst. You should call on the mediators that we have in the city, set up a program for the two entities to work together, to work independently with the mediator, and then to work cooperatively with mediator in the two parties. That's the process you should undertake. It will cost you nothing. It will cost the taxpayers nothing.
Hi. Greetings, council. Greetings to the new members of the council. I haven't been here since you've joined the council. Nice to see new faces. I... You know, I don't know what I think about this, because I don't know what's been going on in this negotiation. And I've been trying to follow it pretty closely. I've met with NDC. I've had conversations with some of the co-op folks, met, had conversations with some of you all. And frankly, it is very puzzling to me why you passed a resolution last spring, and here we sit almost a year later. And I don't have the foggiest idea what's gone on in this negotiation. And I want to emphasize again, this is a negotiation not to come up with a plan. It's a negotiation to come up with how you're going to develop a plan. You know, I've been in these kinds of negotiations over the course of my life. I can't for the life of me understand why it's taking as long as it is. And again, I've tried to get a better understanding. So I don't really have a position on this. It would help if we knew something more about what was going on, to know whether or not this additional funding for, you know, additional lawyer's fees is warranted. But it's just very difficult to understand why it's necessary and therefore to have an intelligent position on this. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on from our voting items. Are there any other public comments now? Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss one? So these are just general public comments, and then we'll move on to a public comment specific to the Tacoma Park redevelopment. Mr. Lovelace, do you have another comment this evening?
Yes, I sure do. I want to remind people that it's only 34 days before the primary election day comes on April 26th. And I'd like to ask people to remind each other to vote. We can't impress on people how important it is. I hear a lot of people saying that it's only the primary and it's not that important. But that's how we get our candidates on the ballot, by the way. We do it by voting in the primary. I'd like to see if the city council could ask the schools to educate the kids on it. Maybe give them some homework to do by coming to the city council meeting and taking part in it. I'd like to see how that would affect the voting percentage. And I'd also like to see it put in the newsletter. And then the other thing is how important voting is. We are the boss. We're the ones who really decide by our ballot box and our vote. Another thing, too, is are we ever going to get a Collins program so that elderly people who can't get out can call in on the public comment period? And also, if they call in after the public comment period, at least it'll be noted down? Because I hear occasionally that they say that they'd like to participate, but there's no way they can do it. And I was thinking of a Collins program, program for Collins. That way, they can't say we couldn't do it. You know, that way they couldn't say, "I wanted to do it, but I couldn't." And that's why I'd like to see that done. And also, are we going to ever put it on the... In the newsletter and on the other media around... About the illegality of the drones? The chief of police said three weeks ago in the... During the crime report, when he spoke up publicly, he said how there already is illegal in this area. And then we can openly, with an open conscience, enforce that law. Enforce that law before a terrorist enforces his opinion on us. Thank you very much for letting me share. Love it, love it, love it.
Any other public comments this evening? All right. So then we will move on to comments specifically on Tacoma Junction. I'd like to take a few moments before we begin this public comment period just to say a few words. Hearing comments from the public on a regular basis is very important to all of us on council. But I also want to acknowledge that it can be a very frustrating experience, not only for people who give public comments, but for us. Because the way it's structured is it's not a conversation. It's not a time for us to go back and forth. And that can be frustrating, and it's frustrating for us. But in order to have our formal meetings like we do and to make sure that people have the opportunity to provide public comment, we need to have some boundaries on that. And so we generally limit public comments to up to three minutes unless requested prior to a meeting. And this is really to enable everyone who comes to a meeting to have the opportunity to speak in a timely fashion and to make sure we hear from everybody. If you have a question, we will take note of it. And during either our council comments or during the city manager's comments, we can try to respond to it. Sometimes questions are posed that we need to do a little research and get back to you. And I know some of you understand that. And so if we can't respond to your questions during council comments or the city manager's comments, we will come back at another time. I just want to... Because I know myself and a number of my colleagues on the city council have probably received similar questions over the last few days. And so I thought I'd just answer some of the questions that we have received so far. One is on regarding process and schedule, just to kind of make sure we're all on the same page of where we are with that. As we noted last week, and I think was just noted by one of the residents, we selected NDC as our partner in redeveloping the Tacoma Junction lot last April. At that time, the city council passed a resolution setting out our priorities for moving forward with this redevelopment. But we did not sign any agreement with NDC at that time. So no agreement has been signed with the developer. In July, we hired a law firm to help us move forward with the drafting of a development agreement and the negotiations. That development agreement was drafted in October and sent to NDC. NDC sent us back comments in December. And given our elections and a new council, we then had the opportunity over the last couple of months to meet and go back and forth and provide comments on that development agreement. But it is still a process, and we do not have a signed agreement with NDC. While NDC has taken a number of important pre-development steps that they informed us about last week to move forward with the project, as I said, we're still in negotiations. And I know people have asked over the weekend, "Well, are you negotiating this? Are you negotiating that?" And unfortunately, given the nature of a negotiation, the specifics are things that we cannot at this point reveal. But what I would ask people to do is to go back to the resolution council passed last April. Because we spent a great deal of time crafting that resolution. So it was very clear that we listened to residents' concerns and that what we... When we were going through this process that we're going through right now, what our priorities would be. And in that is stated numerous times in the council resolution, as we've stated here, that the city places a priority on the co-op. And it understands its needs and concerns regarding a loading dock, expansion, and needing to stay open during construction. So we passed out the resolution last week, is up on the city's website. And it's our strong hope that an agreement between the co-op and NDC is accomplished quickly. And we will do what is possible for us as a city council to facilitate that process. Finally, I ask that we take a step back and we acknowledge this evening that going through a negotiation process is stressful. This is not the fun part of this job. And for our community, we don't do this every day. And, you know, other communities, they do this type of development. We don't. And this is a stressful process because it's new. And I appreciate everybody who has followed along, who has written in, who has asked us questions, and who continues to push us and ask what we're doing in this process. Because when we think about it, this lot that we're talking about isn't very large, but it has a very important location in our community. And at the end of the day, we want this redevelopment to serve the needs of residents across our whole community and to enhance the character of our community. And an important part of this project, and probably more important, is how we work together as a community on this project. We may disagree, and I will venture to say we're going to disagree. There's too many decisions to be made over the next few months, over the next year, that we will all come to agreement. But the important thing is to remember that we need to disagree respectively and constructively so that we have both a process and a project at the end of the day that this community can be proud of. So with that, I'd like to open up now for public comment on the Tacoma Junction redevelopment. Marilyn Berger of the co-op requested ahead of time for additional time to speak to this. And so I'd like to invite Marilyn to speak.
Thank you. I don't usually read my presentations, as those of you who have seen me before know, but this is such an important and emotional issue. I want to be sure I cover everything in the allotted time. The co-op is the only entity whose very existence and with it the livelihood of 43 wonderful employees depends upon a successful outcome for this project. We are not trying to impede development, but we are trying to ensure that the co-op is here to serve our community long after the junction revitalization is completed. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for arranging this special time for us to share our experiences, and especially giving me 10 minutes to do it. Your decision to do this without any request from the co-op demonstrates your desire to listen to and evaluate all perspectives so that we can move forward. When Tacoma Park issued a resolution last April naming NDC as the developer, we were especially grateful to the council for showing your strong support, as Kate just mentioned. By including the need for the developer to establish a mutually acceptable working relationship with the co-op, quote, "that assures its current and future operational expansion and expansion needs," the resolution also noted that NDC has indicated it will work to assure the co-op's continuity of operations during construction. The council has shared the same hopes we had for an early agreement regarding the co-op's long-term role as an anchor in an expanded structure at the junction. After all, it was the co-op that was anxious to expand and led to the process of issuing or helped to lead to the process of issuing the RFP to begin with. So we would like to see this happen. We're greatly disappointed that two years after the RFP was issued and almost an entire year after NDC was selected, the co-op has not had one substantive discussion with the developer about how our business continuity needs will be addressed during construction. If we cannot agree upon a way to remain open during the year and a half NDC predicts it will take, the co-op will die. This is not overdramatization. This is a business reality. Our efforts to address co-op survival during development began long before NDC was selected. Way back in July 2014, I asked city staff to consider how developer candidates would address the business continuity needs of the co-op during construction. And I wrote, "I just want to be sure the delivery lifeline to the co-op remains on the city's radar." In October 2014, I wrote to the four remaining finalists, and this is a quote, "At their meeting on September 29th, the Tacoma Park City Council expressed their strong support for the continued viability and growth of the Tacoma Park Silver Spring co-op during and after any development that takes place on the lot adjacent to the store." They asked me to put together a list to send to the They asked me to put together a list to send to the four finalists of what TPSS actually requires in order to assure business continuity during and after construction. I listed safe, easy, unimpeded access to the store loading dock for delivery, trash, recycling, and compost; safe accessible parking for staff, customers, and visitors to other businesses; grocery customers having ability to bring carts to their cars to unload; easy entrance into and exit from the store; and long-term stability in an expansion space that we may occupy. On March 3rd, 2015, during a period when we were meeting with potential developers, again, NDC hadn't even been selected yet, I wrote to NDC, "Our expansion team would like to invite you to meet with us to discuss your latest proposal and how we can work together to address the co-op's needs for access to our loading dock and business continuity during and after construction." Moving forward from survival needs during construction to business needs after construction, last June, NDC requested a detailed listing of anything the co-op might want or need in an expanded space. Within weeks, we responded with a document clearly labeled "A Draft in Progress," as we knew there would be many areas to be discussed, with compromises and adjustments made as we worked together. Some areas we expected to discuss at length during the months to come were the amount of parking and the configuration of the loading dock. TPSS did not receive any feedback for four months, and we still have not begun discussions this document was supposed to initiate. By the way, we have heard some misinformation circling about the specifications in that July document. The biggest one with the most impact is that we've requested four loading docks. I don't know if you've heard that, but I've heard that. Right now, we have one loading dock, and it works just fine. But we have no use for four loading docks. What we did request was one loading dock with easy and safe access that could handle a range of size vehicles, from small pickups to the 18-wheelers that are the big bugaboo in this whole picture. We've also heard it suggested that the answer to the loading dock issue is for co-op delivery trucks to unload on the street the way Ace Hardware does. Ace receives two deliveries from 18-wheelers a week. The co-op currently receives 11, and this amount will increase if our retail space doubles. Ace Hardware's location cannot be compared to ours. Can you imagine what it would be like to have 18-wheelers stopped in front of the co-op while they unload? The traffic is horrendous now. What would it be like then? And we're really striving for a plan to keep all our delivery trucks off the neighborhood residential streets. I'm sure you're wondering what has been discussed during our meetings with NDC since April. Most of the time has been devoted to reviewing the latest project schedules. While our meetings have been most cordial, we have not spoken about the issues that are of most concern to us. When we have asked to talk about these issues, NDC has explained that they're not going to spend any money on addressing them until they have a signed agreement with the city. This is understandable, of course, as NDC is a business that cannot afford to spend a great deal of its own money before it has assurance that it's going to pay off in the end. However, it did leave us in a quandary, because TPSS is also a business that needs to stay open to succeed. Prior to our last meeting three weeks ago, NDC asked if the co-op had any items for the agenda. I responded that we would particularly like to cover the latest iteration of NDC plans, with particular attention to the incorporation of responses to the items in the document we provided in July, and business continuity, including access to the loading dock. You can all see the rest of it by now. An update on the LDA with the city, an update on any studies that had been completed, and the latest timeline. We did review the project timeline and an update on the status. The studies we know are pending. But no mention was made of the document from last summer or the business continuity issues. And this is of three weeks ago. During their presentation to you last Wednesday, NDC confirmed that they had not as yet presented the co-op with a draft letter of intent. In fact, there has been no mention in any of our discussions of an LOI since last summer, when we reviewed the LOI between Yes Organic Market and an NDC building in DC. At that time, our position was we could not draft a letter of intent until we had a better idea of how the co-op would stay open during construction and how co-op operations would ultimately fit into the overall development. The council has emphasized your desire for the co-op and NDC to agree on a letter of intent so the LDA can be finalized. We are anxious to cooperate in any way we can. But from a sound business perspective, we need to start with an agreed-upon plan to keep the co-op open and accessible during construction. We would also like to begin discussions on the issues raised in the June document in order to establish a relationship with NDC of mutual trust and collaboration, to be sure that our operational needs are being seriously considered. We at the co-op continue to hope for a quick and positive resolution of the issues before us, so we can form that three-legged redevelopment stool, which consists of the city, NDC, and the co-op, to which council member Schultz referred months ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Vanessa Dixon-Briggs, and I was trying to wait for somebody else to get up, because I just didn't want to go first. So I appreciate the comments that you made that placed the council's position in a better perspective. Because there's, all the information I have pretty much comes from the listserv, which is, it seems, is a variation of opinion, and is fairly unreliable in some ways. And so it's good to hear directly from the council in terms of what its position is, and it's great to hear from the co-op in terms of what its position is. I do support the co-op very much. I'm a Tacoma Park resident. I've been shopping at the co-op for 20 years, even before I moved here, like 14 years ago. So it is, it is my, one of my go-to places to get food. Healthy food. I want to emphasize that. It's a core value. And I'm, I'm hoping that the words in the resolution that the council passed, in terms of valuing the co-op, I'm hoping that the council follows through with that in a meaningful way. It's good to know, to have the new information, that you plan to establish a citizen panel to assist NDI with its development. And what I'd like to do, if I may, is to throw a name in the hat for the council's recommendation, and I recommend Dave Paris, who, my understanding is a lifelong Tacoma Park resident. He knows the community very well. And so that's my recommendation. And I'm hoping that particularly this 18-month period of construction that really could shutter the co-op would be considered very seriously. Where I go to church in DC, on 8th Street, I witnessed for years when they were developing the land for the trolley, which really has set idle for some time, but that's a different issue. But during that time, it was years. And it shut down the street. There was no parking. You really couldn't get to the sidewalk. And a lot of those businesses that had been there for decades died. The customers just could not get to them. And so I think that the co-op is a core business here in this community. And that if that issue, that very immediate issue, is not reconciled, that it threatens to do exactly what the co-op representative said that it would. There are other issues that I now don't think I have enough information to really comment on, in terms of the parking spaces, whether the co-op asked for additional parking spaces or whether they didn't. There's issues in terms of the traffic. I would like to say that, in general, there's an economic benefit to buying locally, in terms of those dollars staying in the community longer. And just to say in closing, that it's not just another grocery store that's conveniently located here. It's a grocery store that carries, again, healthy food conveniently located here. So I believe that having access to that food was a core value for Tacoma Park residents. And the next closest place that I'm aware of is Whole Foods, which is 15 minutes, one-way, non-rush hour, and then there's the return trip. And then there's trying to find a place in that parking lot. And then they're standing in the lines. So there are times I go to Whole Foods. That's fine. But I value so much the quality of the food, the selection of the food, the service that's provided, the convenience of the location in this community, five minutes away from where I live. And especially when I only need an item or two, it really means even more to me to have that sort of convenience, and that adds character to this neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Jim D. Luigi, again. I have a suggestion. Rather than spending $30,000 or $50,000 on attorneys, I listened to the developer the other night, talking to you, and it was clear that they haven't had any substantive discussions. It was also clear that they were reluctant to spend money on getting into the development designs of the project unless they had a commitment. So why don't you consider, instead of spending that $30,000 to $50,000 on attorneys, to forward it to the developer with a condition, that they come up with a program and a plan that's acceptable to the co-op, that you mutually agree upon. And if they can't, then you've spent that money there constructively. If they can, then that money should come back to the city as the development moves forward. So you can either solve the problem now, or put attorneys on this thing and never solve it. So there's a way to solve this. There's a way to give the developer the money that they need to start design. And there's a way that they don't lose in the process. And there's a way that the co-op can be satisfied in the process. It's fairly simple. I just wish you would consider it.
Thank you.
I'm Betsy Taylor from Willow Avenue. And I also want to thank the mayor for your opening comments. They were really helpful. And just for the reiteration that there, in the draft agreement, as I understand it, we're saying, if we go forward, there's already an intention to keep the co-op as an anchor to accommodate the loading dock, accommodate staying open during construction. So it seems like we're all on the same page on that. And that then in the further, as I understand it, what the NDC is asking for, and what maybe we're all asking for, I'm not totally clear on this, is that there would be some commercial space, some open space, and maybe some residential. So I just want to say a couple of things, and I have a couple of questions. I also love the co-op. That goes without saying. And I also support the development if we can address some of the core needs. And I listened to the video from last week with NDC, and I continue to be very concerned about the parking and traffic. Right now, when you go up there, and your comment about your mother, you wait a long time to get through that intersection, whether you're a pedestrian or a driver. And when you, when I was listening to them, they said, NDC said, "It's not just supply of parking, it's the management of the parking and the traffic." But there wasn't a single idea put forward. So I just urge you to press them a little bit, like, how could it actually work? This is, this is east-west highway. This is a major artery. We're already getting clogged up in Tacoma Park with all the development. So it's just, before we rush forward, that seems so fundamental. So that's one comment. A second question is, who's on the community consultation process advisory committee? And how do you get on? I understood from last week, you were talking about maybe each, each city council member would identify one person. I just say, if that's the process, just to encourage diversity of perspective, that will be so important. Otherwise, it will lead to animosity and fighting. And then listening tonight, I thought the co-op presentation was really compelling. And yet, what you hear kind of in the rumor mill is that the co-op's the problem. And in fact, when I listened to the video, it was kind of like, well, we're moving really slowly, and we know who the problem is. And that really was what I felt when I listened to that video. The co-op is obstructionist. They're not responding. That's how I felt. I may have misunderstood. But what I'm hearing is that, in fact, they put forward a memo, and there was no response for four months. So, and that finally, just to wrap up, NDC is characterizing the co-op as maybe slow-moving in a respectful way. The co-op is saying NDC doesn't address their fundamentals, the fundamentals that we say we're committed to. NDC says they don't want to until they have a signed contract, they can't spend the money. It cries out for mediation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could ask, if you would like to speak, could, would people mind lining up and maybe sitting in the front row, just to facilitate moving us along?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Susan Robb at 203 Manor Circle. And I would also like to expand the council's horizons a bit on the issue of the junction. There is more to the junction than the co-op in the city lot. And that is, I'm here to take issue with Seth Grimes' claim in a listserv this morning that there is a large parking surplus in Tacoma Junction, demonstrated by the near-empty state of the city lot during the day. Mr. Grimes, former council member and co-chair of the Tacoma Junction Task Force, should know better. I too served on the Tacoma Junction Task Force, and I raised parking issues then with the council and with the task force. At the time I read Seth's comments this morning, there were four non-resident vehicles parked on Manor Circle from my residence at 203 to the house at 213 Manor Circle. Mr. Grimes and council members, where would you park? Would you park free on Manor Circle and walk across the street on Cross Carroll Avenue to go to the shops in the 7300 block? Or would you park in the city lot? Put money in the meter? Stand at the light for an extended period of time? Cross Carroll Avenue twice to get to the shops on the 7300 block of Carroll Avenue? And if you're lucky, you'll get across in one cycle? I think the answer is, we'll all park on Manor Circle. And that's exactly what's happening. Manor Circle and beyond is the junction parking lot. Seven days a week, we have a steady stream of non-resident parking from 6:00 and 7:00 a.m. in the morning till 8:00 p.m. at night. We retunely have salon employees and patrons, music school employees and patrons, yoga students, and others, other miscellaneous people parking on our street. Permit parking is often suggested as a remedy to our situation, but the city's code for permit parking was written years ago in anticipation of commuter parking due to the new metro station. The present code does not address particular particulars of current parking patterns and issues. There is not a large parking surplus in the junction. Rather by default, commercial parking is swamping a residential street. We need a new parking code, a permit parking code, that I can take to my neighbors. Manor Circle residents want their street back. We want to come and go without dread of returning to find our street parked up. We want our plumber and our AC guy to be able to make house calls, just like regular folks on a regular residential street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
My name's Jeff Cruck. I live on Woodland, just up the street from Tim. I'm a little having trouble trying to decide how to make an intelligent comment. NDC is not talking. In this phase of the process, you're not talking. So I don't know exactly what's going on. But when I hear what's going on with the process, I'm very mystified. I build space missions for NASA on a regular basis. We're used to very big contracts. And there isn't this cat and mouse game where no one seems to know exactly, no one seems to be in charge of setting the requirements, and the would-be contractors don't seem to know what it is they have to do to be successful. They seem to be able to set terms, or rather refuse to negotiate, and just sort of sit and wait until they have a contract. NASA does not build a space mission and write contracts without controlling what it is the would-be spacecraft vendor or whoever, whoever else has to live up to. That's defined in advance, and they propose to that. So I don't understand this process. It seems to be very different. So, and I don't know how to make an intelligent comment, but it doesn't seem to be a very rational process. Maybe there are good reasons for that, that I just don't know about. But the one thing I would just say in conclusion is that, to my mind, the co-op is the most important business in the city, and I really want you to do no harm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Badet, Sycamore Avenue. I wrote some emails to our streets listserv the other day, basically inviting people to look at the video of last Wednesday's city council meeting, and also expressing my view that my takeaway from that meeting was that NDC has not yet truly attempted to have substantive discussions regarding the co-op's expansion needs, nor their need for uninterrupted access during the construction phase. I got a couple of comments in reply from neighbors, one of which was, "I think it's time to get the co-op and the developers in the same room at the same time with everyone present." And the other one was, "If the Tacoma Park government doesn't put binding protections into the deal which guarantees the viability of the co-op, the developer will do whatever they want to maximize profit without concern for the impact on the co-op." So I would really urge you to take seriously this idea about community-based mediation and negotiation, to work with maybe all three parties, co-op, NDC, and city, all in the same room. Maybe the, maybe NDC needs to have a letter of intent written to the co-op, along with the co-op's letter of intent to NDC, prior to any kind of assigned contract going through. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Again, if people could come up, if you want to speak, sit near the podium, thank you.
My name's Lorraine Pierceall. I'm vice president of Historic Tacoma. And as you all kind of would imagine, I listen to a heck of a lot of development talks and go to a lot of development meetings. And I have to say, I was really disappointed with the NDC meeting, because I felt like there were a lot of words that really weren't saying anything, they weren't really well-prepared, and they weren't providing a glimmer of inspiration. And at this point, you know, developers know what they're doing. I mean, they size a project out immediately to scope it out and figure out how they're going to make things work, whether it's feasible. They have to have ideas, and we are not hearing them. And so I want to urge you to ask, ask them some hard questions. And I appreciate that Councilmember Smith actually did ask a very pointed question about the letter, and I think that's really what you have to do. I'm assuming that before you sign an agreement, my understanding is, is that you're going to get the kind of assurance that we need for the business continuity and all of that, because you don't want to be trapped in an agreement that could be very, very, turn out to not be very good. And so one of my concerns in dealing with developers is that you certainly do that. They talked about this committee, and I'm going to ask you that before you start appointing committees and setting up any kind of a structure, that you get in writing directly from NDC exactly what they envision. And the reason is, is because I remember previous conversations early on where they were looking for a large committee, and it seemed to me to be more a decision-making body, and I'm kind of concerned about it. There wasn't enough solid dialogue on that at the meeting. And at one point, it almost seemed like it was being suggested that they needed this committee to set up meetings. Well, you have staff to do that. So I think it would be wise to make them put down in writing exactly what they intend this committee to do, because it should not supplant a broader community discussion. And that is my concern with this. Also, the one thing actually that I did notice with the developers' discussion and did agree with was their concern over including residential use on this project. And I could see, just from their body language, they're really nervous about it, because it doesn't make a lot of sense to do it, it's a small site, and it's going to create a lot of stress and complications with parking, and just logistics, and how tall it is. And you know, and the height of the building is going to become very important for this district. So I'm asking you to please reconsider on that parcel housing, and think of it somewhere else, but that should be all commercial development. That's in line with the Tacoma Junction Task Force. Just my concern, that's going to cause a lot of problems down the road, okay? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Mary Curcio, Carroll Avenue. And I didn't actually come prepared to speak, so this might be a little discombobulated. But I like the man from NASA, working government contracts, and I am just mystified as to the process that's being followed here. Government contractors have to be willing to put out money. You don't just come to the table and say, "Well, I want a contract, but I can't put out any money first, and I'm not going to do anything until I put out any money." So that's sort of a major problem. But if you get past that problem, nothing is getting done. And, you know, I fully support the co-op. I think something needs to go in right away that says, you know, they have to be taken care of. They're not only a business, they're a part of our community, and they support us. Beyond that, if there's all this problem going on with just the co-op and what's going on there, how do you think you're going to negotiate the parking and the development? There's nothing set up. So I think the city council has to take a good look at what the council wants and what the community wants. What do we want about the co-op? What do we want for parking? What kind of development do we want? Put that in an agreement, and get them to sign an agreement with, and there'll be some negotiation on that agreement, but at least you'll have something in place to start with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Although again, I do want to thank you for this opportunity to address this issue --
Could you give your name?
Oh, Fred Feinstein. I live on Sycamore Avenue. To address this subject, which as you're well aware, has so many people care so much about. I was out of town for last week's meeting, but I did watch the tape carefully. And in that meeting, several people expressed the hope that we're getting close to having a plan for how to develop the junction. I wish I shared that optimism. But the reality is, as we've heard several people express here, we still have little or no idea what the development of the junction will look like. I'm afraid that as we sit here today, we still don't even know what the process for developing the plan will look like. And if you look at this in total, we're really not much closer than we were six years ago when the task force was first convened. We have made some progress, surely. But this time, rather than putting together a broadly representative task force to come up with the plan, we've chosen a developer to figure out, not only to come up with the plan, but how to come up with the plan. It's now in NDC's hands. So it's true, we've had much discussion about what to build and how to proceed. We had the eighteen-months task force, and over the past two years, surely there have been lots of public meetings to discuss this, where people have shared a wide variety of views. And the council's resolution last spring did set out some concrete principles to guide NDC as they come up with the plan. So we have made some steps forward. Last week, we also heard some discussion about what the process to develop the plan is going to look like. But frankly, as has been suggested by others, I found it all kind of mushy and vague. The developer, this is what we know, the developer has to, quote, "work out something with the co-op," something it's failed to do, as we've heard in great detail, in the year since the resolution has passed. And again, as I stated earlier, it's mystifying to me as to why such little progress has been made. There will be a community advisory committee, as we've heard, set to help the process, and there'll be three more community meetings. This is what we heard. NDC will then come up with a plan to present to the council for your approval. Why aren't I more optimistic that this process is going to succeed? Well, first, as I say, I'm not sure why so little has happened in the year that's already taken place. We would have thinks more would have happened. But fundamentally, I don't think, the reason I'm not optimistic, is I don't think that we're being realistic about development of the junction. Here's where we are. The development must accommodate the expansion of the co-op. It must provide sufficient parking for an expanded co-op and other existing businesses. And according to the council resolution, it should be guided by principles that the task, of the task force, with specific recommendations of, quote, "a pavilion, a playground, garden space, indoor park."
Thank you. You had your three minutes. Everyone else is abiding by the three minutes so that people can speak. Everyone else, I respectfully ask you, everyone else is being respectful of the three minutes.
Well, I, many people have gone well over the time.
No, Mr. Feinstein, no one else, except for Marilyn Berger, who requested before the meeting, everyone else is following the three minutes.
Okay.
I ask you to put, no, you're done. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Keith Kozloff. I live on Sycamore Avenue. I submitted some written comments to the council earlier today, so I won't go through those again. I want to take a slightly different tack. When I engaged with the council last year, one of the things I was looking for was a sense that there would be a development process that incorporates a vision for the entire junction as a community resource that will be attractive to residents. And I'm still waiting to see if there will be such a process. I don't see it as part of the negotiation between NDC and the co-op. I don't really see it as part of the negotiation between the city and NDC. And I'd be surprised if it was part of the process that NDC is organizing in terms of public consultation. I suspect that's going to be primarily about what they're going to be doing directly. So I just wanted to acknowledge that I'm still waiting for that, and I hope it'll come about. Thanks.
Thank you.
TJ Matthews, Lincoln Avenue, Ward Two. Always proud to be able to speak to two people that I voted for and are sitting here in office. I watched the video from last week. I was not that impressed by the strength of questioning to NDC. But watching the video, I think it was somewhat intriguing to me, and I wondered whether or not, A, this is being videotaped, and whether NDC will be watching the videotape. And if they are watching the videotape, I want to ask them not to break our heart. It's an emotional plea. Tacoma Park has quite a few big hearts. We have events, we have places, we have history, and the co-op is one of those hearts. Please do not break it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Laura Barclay with the Old Tacoma Business Association. I'm going to read our board of directors' statement on the junction development from December 1st, 2014. It seems fitting repeating tonight, and I thought I'd state it for the new members of the council as well. "The Old Tacoma Business Association supports development at the Tacoma Junction that maintains and builds upon the unique historic assets of the area, increases the economic viability of the businesses, both existing and new, and is sustainable for long-term growth of the neighborhood and its businesses. We encourage ongoing dialogue between all stakeholders to determine acceptable plan to proceed. We affirm the development plan that satisfies the above criteria will be more beneficial to the community and its local businesses than maintaining the status quo." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Curran. I live on Montgomery Avenue, and I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to the council and the mayor tonight, and I really appreciate your comments, Mayor Stewart, earlier. I think it's great that the council's interested in protecting and preserving the co-op. And I think we've heard tonight that there's a, this, as you were saying, this is a piece of property that has a lot of value to the community for the character of Tacoma Park. And there's a number of different issues involved. There's the co-op, which is very valued. There's parking for businesses that we're trying to foster. There's pedestrian access, because it's a difficult place to cross the street. And there's the issue of open space. There's been various things that have gone on in that parking lot with food trucks and fairs and things like that. So there's all these public amenities involved. And I just want to suggest that it feels to me a little bit like, what do you call, making a silk purse out of a sow's ear, or just trying to put a square peg in a round hole, that this process of going straight to a developer before actually having a plan for the junction is turning out to be difficult and painful. And I guess now that there's a contract negotiation, there's got to be confidentiality that's really kind of inconsistent with the process of planning a public space like this. And I have a question, which is, it'd be great if these negotiations worked out to everybody's satisfaction, but if they don't, is there, once this contract is entered, is there a way for the city council to say, "This process just didn't work, and we've got to go back to square one?" That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments this evening?
Ian Barclay, Cedar Avenue. Again, I'll keep it short and sweet. As somebody who used to go to the co-op when it was over on Sligo Avenue, lo so many years ago, I just want to encourage the thought that there is no meeting of minds yet. We have no contract, and nothing close to a contract, and it doesn't look like it's going to get to a contract. And I really want to echo what Lorraine said, which is that the contractor's all about business. They've figured this thing out, and they've got their pencils sharp, and they're looking at the figures. And they really couldn't care less. And I hate to say just this, because they're not here to defend themselves, but I trust that the co-op is way down on their list, even though they'll say, "Oh, yeah, we're worried about the co-op, and yeah, we'll work with them." And I just want to remind everybody that from the meeting several weeks ago, the city's already spent thirty-some thousand dollars, not counting the two appraisals, one which was sixty-some hundred dollars, and I don't know what the other one was, but I don't, and I don't remember the exact money that the appraisal determined that the lot was worth. But it seems like a large portion of the, whatever is to be gained from this sale, is rapidly disappearing. And I want to remind everybody that from that meeting several weeks ago, pretty soon they're going to be closing Carroll Avenue. It should be coming up sometime in this spring, for sure. And I can just imagine what the junction's going to be like, because as I refer to it, malfunction junction, and the bus drivers always laugh when I say that, but they look at me, and they give me that look like, "Yeah, you're right. This is a serious malfunction up here." I can only imagine what it's going to be like if they start working on that, the Carroll Avenue's closed. I mean, it's, like some other people have said, it's going to be real tough. Thank you very much. Hope you get to an answer of some sort.
Stephen Kern, Woodland Avenue. I don't know if anybody up here made a connection that I did three weeks ago when we weren't talking about the junction. And Ms. Braithwaite talked about Carroll Avenue, and talked about how suddenly Sligo was going to be closed, and this was a huge surprise. And it was going to be construction at night, and everybody said, "Oh, my God, how could this happen?" And there was a whole lot of conversation about, what are we going to do, and where is the detour going to go, and how is the state going to be involved, and how is the city going to be involved? I'm thinking, okay, well, this was planned for a really long time by a lot of smart people, and now we're surprised? And I'm making the connection with junction here. And I'm thinking about, on the PowerPoint, fourteen months of construction. And what I'd like to see is, if it moves forward, when it moves forward, that contractually, that is all very, very clear, exactly what's going to happen with all of that traffic. Let's not be like we were three weeks ago and say, "We're shocked, shocked," that Let's not be like we were three weeks ago and say, "We're shocked, shocked that this is, all this other stuff is going to happen that we weren't prepared for." If it is going to be, move forward, let's be really, really prepared. And let's not kid ourselves about the, the, just, you know, apocalypse that's going to be the junction.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'm David Bloxstein and other of the Sycamore Avenue people. And I just want to add my concern about the potential impact on the co-op and the importance of the co-op, that my wife and I were talking about this at dinner tonight and realized that between the co-op and the farmer's market, we purchase about ninety percent of our food right in Tacoma Park. And I know that there's a lot of good intention here in terms of protecting the co-op and all of that, and I just encourage the council to follow the Hippocratic oath of, first, do no harm, and make sure that whatever is coming forward is really intended to be an improvement and that, I know it's intended to be an improvement, but even maintaining the situation it is, as it is right now, is not a bad thing. And messing it up would be a bad thing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Karen Collins from Sycamore Avenue. I'm going to finish Fred's statement. "NDC has been asked to come up with a plan to accommodate the expansion of the co-op, other existing bus, and provide sufficient parking for other existing businesses in addition to the co-op, and open space or some public space, and then deal with the traffic." This is really asking a lot. I simply don't think it can be done. That lot is small. It measures six-tenths of an acre. I want to make clear that I'm not being critical of NDC. They've acted responsibly. They've taken the time to meet with me and others on numerous occasions. They've simply been placed in a difficult, if not impossible, position. I don't see how the development can include all that's been placed on their plate. And furthermore, a developer is not the entity that should have the responsibility of deciding what kind of development the community wants and of accommodating the needs of the co-op. I have said this to NDC and others of the council. The response I usually get is, "Let's wait and see what they come up with while we're waiting." I understand this process will move forward, and we will see. I would love to be surprised, but I'm not optimistic. I wish to conclude with a happier thought. There is another way to move forward that I think would be far more likely to result in junction development that would reunite our community and move us quickly to a plan that could be implemented. The, it's actually the process recommended by the task force. The co-op, working in conjunction with the community and the city, would develop a plan for expansion, loading, and parking, public space, et cetera. With the resources and expertise in this community, I have no doubt that this process would not only result in a plan, but a sound and doable way to implement it. It would not be development that a developer would, developer would find profitable, but it would be the kind of a development the task force recommended and the community would embrace. I know we can't go there today, but as we move forward on the current course, it's important to remember that if it continues to bog down, there is an alternative. Thank you.
Hi, Tobe Wasafai, 117720 Carroll Avenue. First and foremost, thank you, council. Mayor, you did a very good explanation of the process. I have to be very honest with you. I'm sitting here, I came here to listen. But the comment that I'm hearing, there's a subtext to the comment. It looks like a statement against the development disguised as a support to the co-op. As far as I'm concerned, the process started with eighteen-month public hearing to see what the community wants. That was on the table. That was the guiding principle. And in that process, co-op was established as a very prominent institution in our, in our community. I believe it is. I see most of my people being employed, even though I can't afford to buy there. But I want to remind each and every one of us, in the Tacoma Park, this is not a representation of Tacoma Park. The people who are here are people who have the privilege, the intelligence, the time, the, the ability to articulate they need. My community doesn't afford, doesn't afford this. I've been waiting for that place to open my little coffee shop on that premises. Be aware of the other silent majority in our community. I have had opportunities to open coffee shop away from Tacoma Park, and I'm dead set to make it here because this is where it is conceived. I love the co-op. Co-op sells my coffee. I love the environment, the space. But as we, as we pursue our individual interest, please pay attention to those who don't have the privileges, those who don't have the intellect, intelligence, the time to come articulate their need. I need that development, but I want the development to accommodate the co-op's need. But I have some comments libertizers. It's like stepping on my dream. I've been communicating with the council for the last eight years to open my little coffee shop on that space, and that is not acceptable. Please, as you pursue your self-interest, look left and right, consider others who don't have the power, the privilege to articulate their need. And I hope that the council moves. I hope NDC pays attention to the need of the co-op, but that doesn't mean dismissing the need the little people like me have to make our life viable in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Neil Cohen, Columbia Avenue. And I appreciate the comments from, gentlemen from Blessed Coffee. And I think that's a perfect segue to say that the, the community is not fully represented in this room tonight. I mean, and through the development process, and it has been a process, and there've been meetings frankly ad nauseam. I mean, that's great, that's what we're about, but they keep going on, and, and the junction is supposed to serve the entire community, not just the adjacent streets to the co-op. There are legitimate concerns. Parking and traffic are legitimate. They're studied. Everyone in the room, in this room tonight, seems to think that they have the magic solution, that they can, you put them in the room, they're going to negotiate away. And, and one gentleman seems to really have it in for lawyers, and I don't know if he had a bad experience with lawyers, but what lawyers do is lawyers negotiate in a dispassionate way about different people's self-interests. Right, exactly. To take emotion out of it, like laughter like that, which is actually quite dismissive, sir. So that's why you pay people, so you can come to a rational, objective decision, not one that's guided by emotions and people's personal experiences. I personally think that the council has put forth a resolution. I trust this council and the city staff that it means what it said, it means what it voted on. It voted to give the co-op a most favored nation status in the city. Everyone understands the importance of the co-op. But it, the co-op is also a for-profit business that has to engage in negotiation with another for-profit business. And we are not all going to be in the room when that happens. So there seems to be a distrust and almost a conspiracy that they're out to screw the co-op. And I don't know where that distrust comes from. I don't share that distrust. I think that, yes, when you renovate your house, there's inconvenience, but you renovate your house in the hope of something better and something better for you and your family in the future. And this is a renovation of the city's house. It's centerpiece in the center of the city. It's a renovation of the co-op's house, and it's an important renovation. I appreciated Ms. Berger's comments tonight. I like especially when she said it should be an environment of mutual trust and, and collaboration to make this go forward. And I think if the co-op and NDC enter into negotiations in a spirit of partnership and do that, that'll be great. But I did get to, I got emails this week, because I'm a co-op member, that says, in all caps, "The future of our co-op is at risk," which, by the way, in all caps, means screaming. And then it says, "Reminder: Help save your co-op." I don't see how that created an atmosphere of mutual trust and collaboration. But I hear her comments tonight, and I welcome the comments, and I hope that that is, in fact, the position of the co-op, and I hope it is also the position of NDC. And I've been very impressed by Mr. Adrian Washington. I think he has much more patience than I do, and I applaud him, and I hope that this is a successful project. In sum, I don't think we should be relitigating this again, and I don't think, there's, I'm running out of time, but please stay the course and, and continue the investment you've made with completion. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Tony Camilli. I live on Tulip Avenue, and I've sent some comments already to you in advance via email, so I won't reiterate those too much. I, I just wanted to note that, you know, one of the concerns I have about the process and, and as a, as a fellow co-op member and someone who shops at the co-op, especially since the co-op got alcohol, thank you very much. I know people shop there for healthy food, but I like the unhealthy stuff. So keep that coming. Not all of us want to just eat kale all day long. But that being said, I'm concerned a little bit about the process, too. I, I trust that you're doing your job, and you're doing it well. I can see how hard you're working on this, especially considering this is essentially a part-time job for everybody here, despite, not, not the, the city staff. But I am a little, I'm, I'm, you know, when I hear comments from this gentleman here who's talking about, this, this audience does not represent all of Tacoma Park, that really, you know, that really lit off a bell in my mind, because is this city going to put taxpayer-funded money behind his coffee shop? Are they going to put the power and the leverage and the finances of the, of the city government behind his business, the same way that people are asking to do so for the co-op? That concerns me, because I think that there's an element of fairness here, and I like the co-op as much as the next person. It's a great place, but at the same time, what kind of message is it sending to the other businesses in Tacoma Park? And I'm, I'm, I think that you need to all be aware of that and be considerate of the other businesses, because I think we want to encourage businesses to come here. I think that is part of the genesis of why we want to redevelop this plot of land. So I implore you to keep moving forward, do what you're doing. I think you're doing a good job. I think the co-op space can be negotiated. I think there is a solution, but I don't think at the same time that everybody's going to be happy with it. And I think that some people are going to be, you know, upset about that, but that's your job. That's what you get paid for as politicians. So good luck to you.
Okay. All right. We will move on now. All right. It's okay. I ask if you have comments, please move to the front. Thank you.
Roger Schlegel, 6512 Allegheny Avenue. I served on the task force Loosa many years ago now, and I just feel important to carry forward some things from that task force. I was involved a lot with Kay Daniels Cohen in the community outreach portion. And just a couple of things that I really hope the council can honor in this process. First off, NDC said they were going to do a full-fledged community input process, and I keep seeing that watered down, as if they're waiting out everybody until it'll just be a few council meetings like this. That's not what, what was envisioned, and I hope that there really are meetings that are aggressively seeking to talk with people throughout the community. Secondly, I see that the agreement is calling for an accessible community gathering space, and that may be making a lot of people think about a pocket park or something, but I fear that it just turns out to be an elevator-accessible meeting room, which is really nothing more than we already have at historic Tacoma. So be very careful that that's not what we end up with. We need something outdoors where people from all walks of life can gather and feel comfortable together without having to spend a lot of money. For those people here who feel that the city is, is inequitably defending the co-op's interests, I would just say more generally that it makes sense to preserve a grocery store space in the junction, especially as we move toward a more walkable community, or at least a viable future for that turnaround property, which is obviously limited and is already reliant on city-owned land to function as a going concern. Lastly, I would just want to say that if you go back to, you know, a hundred years or maybe it's not that far, was the junction ever really designed? I, I don't think it ever was. It just kind of happened. And when 410 was built through and Philadelphia was pushed through, all of a sudden it became this crazy thing, and, and here we've inherited it. I just want to say that you have precious few opportunities to tinker with the design of a space. And on the task force, we really emphasize thinking globally about the entire business district. And so to the extent that, that's still possible, make sure that whatever happens on the site provides an enhancement to the functionality of the junction as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello there, council members. My name is Carter Doherty, Crescent Place, in Ward 1. I guess you might call me one of the co-founders of Revitalized Tacoma Junction Now. You know there are more than 300 of us. You've heard from us. You'll keep hearing from us. I won't dwell on that. I will say, since we've heard from one side about this negotiation, let me tell you something from my time as a journalist, because I've covered a lot of them, and it rings true throughout everyone. If you're hearing from only one side, there is no way you are hearing the whole story. That's not a question of one side or the other telling the truth. Words get parsed, things get left out. Even under the best of circumstances, it's hard to, to reconstitute these things. So the only thing you can really rely on is the final product. That's why people sweat blood in the negotiation. But it's worth pointing out, there are two agreements here. There's a development agreement with the city and then the, the letter of intent with the co-op. The development agreement runs through the public consultation process that will happen and then includes the transfer of ownership. I believe that's gone too slow. I put that on the elections. I still think it could have gone more quickly, and I say that having worked on behalf of the election of two of you. But nevertheless, it could have gone faster. But in any case, there have been these demands expressed over and over for having it in writing. We are going to have it in writing with the city. That's the great part about this. The letter of intent is a sort of two, three-page document that outlines the roadmap to get to a binding lease, that covers things like rent and, and square footage and renovations and so forth, and of course, business continuity in the case of the co-op. And the beauty of this is, the demand, there have demand, been demands expressed for having this in writing, and we're going to have it in writing. It's called a letter of intent. And again, having covered negotiations, I suspect there's a bit of a chicken and egg problem going on, you know? There are little, the sort of shadow boxing that goes on. NDC wants to see that the development agreement is going to pan out with the city, so it doesn't jump really hard on the letter of intent. Some people might take that the wrong way, but I, it might be worth just taking a deep breath and, and working through the process, as it's been agreed on. I will address one thing, though, because there's, there've been these allusions to, you know, the developer just wants to maximize profit, but somebody needs to explain to me why a developer that wants profitable tenants in its buildings would have any sort of interest in, in not ensuring the business continuity of the co-op. I think we overlook that, that it's very much in the developer's interest to make sure that the co-op thrives. And in any case, as somebody who buys beer and wine there, too, I'm glad to see they're thriving. I, I'm with Tony, the kale just doesn't work for me. Now, there's been this demand for the city to watch out for the co-op. The beauty of it is, the co-op, the city has done that. It's all laid out in the resolution. I encourage everybody to read this. We all want this to move more quickly. The co-op and NDC need to sit down and find what is outlined there, the mutually agreed solution in the council resolution. NDC suggested 30 days. My suggestion is, ready, set, go.
Thank you. We will now move on to council comments. Any comments from my fellow colleagues? Councilmember mail? You want to kick us off?
I want to start by first saying, we talk about the co-op, and we talk about a developer, we talk about the community. The community is represented in the room. The co-op is represented by Marilyn and Robert and Adam and, you know, dear friend Rachel and Abdi in the store, who I see all the time and very much enjoy seeing. The developers are people like Adrian and Juan and Michael, and about seven other employees who work for this very small company. And so developer sounds like big business, distant multinational conglomerate with concrete manufacturing in South Asia. It is a small business that designs really nice places that people live in and work in and shop in. And that's why we pick them, and that's why during the, during the process, when we were looking at four or five or six different proposals, we, we spent a lot of time, as did all of you or many of you, looking at those developers, as did the co-op, and trying to get a sense for the, for the project that was, that had the best fit to the community and the, the proponent of that project, the developer or designer, who also had the best fit for the community. And I still feel just as strongly as I did last year that NDC, Michael and Juan and Adrian are the right people to do that. The reality is that we've made a lot less progress, and it's, and I put that on, I'll just put it on my, my role as a councilman on the city, not on the co-op and not on NDC, in terms of getting to a development agreement. It was very much my expectation after we got to the resolution last April that a development agreement would be in place with
And so, from my perspective, getting an agreement with the developer was something that should have been very much within our reach at that point. And I understand why a developer would want that. To me, it's like having, to use, Neil used an example of a home contractor. It'd be like saying, well, I picked you, Mr. or Mrs. Home Contractor. Have you bought the paint yet? We don't have a contract. I haven't put a down payment down. We don't have a contract. You haven't bought any paint. You haven't hired your workers. Like, we're really not even at that step where we have this agreement, this development agreement with NDC. So, I understand why they haven't made progress in spending their own money, why they have not necessarily made enough progress in working with the co-op, and I understand why the co-op's frustrated because that's not happening. And I really put that on the city, and my belief is that the city is, the city and the council have given very clear signals that it's important to get to that development agreement, get to a letter of intent, and have some of those steps happen quickly. The process, and the NDC and the city both put together timelines that were shared last week. I urge people to look at the PowerPoint. It was part of the record from last week's meeting. This is going to be years, unfortunately, and as another commenter spoke, I am impatient for process to happen faster. My daughter will be in college before we break ground or close to it on this project. And I wish it were something that was going to happen in six months. I wish we had certainty much more quickly, but the process is going to go on for a while. One of the things the council asked NDC to do, to come back to us and staff to obviously double-check this, is what are the key moments when the council and the community are making a decision? What are the things that we're going to review as a community together in public documents that are going to get votes? And there's lots more of those opportunities coming up. So, that's something that we are, you know, we have not gone in some irrevocable place that we can't, you know, we can't come back from. Everything the council put on paper in the resolution in April is still relevant. I mean, maybe with the one exception of the viability of housing in the site, which the developers expressed some questions about, it's just questions, but whereas that seemed like an absolute slam dunk certainty that everybody wanted to do it, it seems a little less certain now. But other than that, I think every other aspect of what went on paper last April is still relevant, but it was last April. So, it feels disappointing that we're here, that the co-op doesn't have the business certainty it should have with this much time passing, that the community doesn't have enough certainty. I just want to make a couple of other points. The council has not been unanimous at many stages of this process. There's lots of little votes, you know, sort of intent, hand raising sort of things that set direction, and that's okay. It's a democratic body, but then we move forward, right? We move forward on the next thing. So, for example, last week, the NDC proposed having a panel that would help, and there was not unanimous, an unanimous vote from council that we should do that because of the issue of representation. How do we set up a panel right? That panel, I believe, is something first that the county, I'm sorry, that the city council creates, and so, we're going to set its purpose. And I think that the purpose of that body, if we create it, is not to make decisions, as Ms. Pierce all expressed some concerns about, but rather to make sure that the community all knows that that body of people are people who are really, really good at communicating, who have a voice and an audience, who are amplifiers in the community, to make sure everybody knows what's going on, everybody has good information. And we talked a little bit about listservs and the information and the quality of that information, to really try to focus on recruiting members of the community who can do that, who can play that role, and I think that could be a valuable role for a small panel committee to play in this process. So, that's one more step going forward. I think we're going to get some progress in terms of where we are, where the city is with NDC in a development agreement in a couple of months, so asking for your patience for a couple of months because I think we're going to make progress in that time, and we'll be back before you with some summary analysis paper on what that progress looks like. So, sort of asking for your patience there. I want to reiterate what was said earlier. Someone used the term most favored nation status, and I think that continues to be true with the co-op. Front and center of all our minds, and certainly of my mind, making sure both, during the construction process, as a part of the expanded space and as part of the viable junction going forward, that that's a big thing that we are very much focused on, again, as is written in writing, and that written resolution is really what still binds us, or at least I feel binds me as a council member, how to keep moving in that same direction. We haven't expressed to you any sense that we're going in a different direction, so as long as we have that piece of paper in writing with our votes behind it, we're supposed to keep going that way, and that's very much what I feel like myself and all of my colleagues and the city staff are still doing. Just two other points. Can the contract or the, can the process be ended? Yes, it can. And we have to pretend as politicians that everything we do has 100% chance of success. If we change direction, we're fickle and feckless, we're failures. We waste time. We waste money. Those are accusations that constantly come up. They certainly plague anyone who lives or works in a federal agency, who works for state government, who works for local government, who works for the business sector. Failure is like not allowed to be something that you put on the table, but the risk of this process is we could end up exactly where we started. We could end up with something very different. We could end up only with a larger co-op. We could end up with traffic for a 12-month construction process. I don't know how many people remember the process of building what is now Bus Boys and Poets. I had to cross the street to go on the sidewalk on the other side of the street for months. I don't think about that anymore. Now, I think about Bus Boys and Poets, this wonderful place with outside seating. But there will be inconvenience. There will be cost. There will be costs of this. There will be things that are unpredictable. The junction will have more traffic during construction, and maybe the whole process fails. We get to a point where NDC and the co-op cannot agree, where NDC and the city cannot agree, where the project that looks viable to be built is not something the city, not something the residents want. All those things are options, and I still would posit that it's worth trying. It's worth trying to make what is now largely 90%, 95% of the time, an empty parking lot that is a large source of runoff, that is a vacant space, that is poorly used, underused, to make that space into something more vibrant, that is still a parking site for the co-op and businesses in the junction and residents, that is still a site for community gatherings, that is still a site for a viable, expanded, successful co-op and a community resource. The risk that we're taking in doing this of accepting change is worth taking, and I think we're going to get somewhere. And again, for me, from my perspective and from what I know about the process, largely from what's been conveyed in the public, I feel like in one or two or three months, we'll have a lot more information for you, and we'll be able to take away some of the fear and make some of you more hopeful and more satisfied, and other people may be less satisfied with where we are, but we'll have more certainty, I think. We'll have, you'll have a clearer picture of what's happening, what's going to happen next, and where we're going. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
He just said age before beauty. He's actually right. I just want to express gratitude for the turnout here tonight. Believe me, nothing's more discouraging when I'm up here thinking, boy, we got something important to talk about and the auditorium's empty. That's not the case tonight, and of course, I realize that there's not a soul in this room who doesn't like the co-op. I mean, if they are, you better run for the door right now. And certainly, all of us are. We passed this resolution last April. We made it very clear in that resolution that we want the co-op to be the anchor tenant in this project, if at all possible, and it does sound like the co-op is continuing to function well, so it's not going anywhere, and so, I expect it to be there for the long term. And I think that, I understand the co-op's anxieties. If I were in Marilyn Berger's position, I'd be anxious and worried too. It's taken, I agree that it has taken longer than I think it could have or should have to get where we are, and of course, what I'm hearing you saying is that you don't know where we are. Well, that's one of the reasons we're meeting tonight, because we have those same questions. And last week, we heard from NDC. This week, we're hearing from the residents and a lot of the co-op people and supporters to help, and so, that's why I'm grateful to hear this. This is very compelling comments that we heard tonight. A couple of things that I want to talk about is that, my point of view is that we have two businesses, two small businesses, a grocery business and a real estate development business. And while the co-op is legally organized as a nonprofit, we all know that all nonprofits have to have a positive bottom line. No co-op unless it's depending on grants, like some do, but a business, a business organization like the co-op is all about trying to make a profit so that it can sustain itself, pay its employees, and have some money left over so they can sleep at night and not, you know, that's a reality. So, the co-op has to be, has to function and be as business-like as it possibly can in order to be successful. So, let's not kid ourselves that the co-op is just some innocent lamb in the woods and the developer is kind of a wolf hiding behind the trees. This is not Little Red Riding Hood. I expect that both organizations understand and know their businesses extraordinarily well, and they're fully capable of negotiating with each other in a mature sort of way. I like the idea of putting them both in a room and throwing away the key and locking the restrooms as well until it's worked out, and I think all of us would be, we'd know that they would come to an agreement. One comment about the earlier agenda item that was commented on about the city's contract with its attorney, Bregman et al., our attorney is not part of the negotiation. They are not doing the negotiation. The co-op has its staff and its attorney. NDC has its staff and its attorney, and they are the ones that are talking to each other. And if they can't reach some sort of agreement, I expect them to be fully capable of saying to each other, we need to bring in a third-party mediator. We've simply asked our attorney, the one that we're trying to, that we are re-upping our financial, our budget for, is to monitor that, but that's only part of what they're going to be doing for us over the next year, and most of what that money's going for isn't, has anything to do with the negotiations. It's a lot of other stuff that they're going to help us with so that we don't get snookered by the developer anymore than the co-op gets snookered by the developer, because we're currently thinking in terms that we will not sell the land. We will probably have a 50-year or 99-year lease so that we will always have control of the land. And that brings me to the point that the concerns I heard tonight is that somehow I know that the co-op is going to come up with a plan and it's not going to be what the community wants. We're the ones that are going to decide whether the plan is acceptable. This, it's not going to be NDC. They're going to say that we can build this sort of project in different sorts of ways and that will make a good return on investment for them. We respect that, but in terms of the exact plan as to what its components will be and all that, ultimately, because it's the city's property, we have control over that, but we're a long ways from that, as you all recognize. I believe we can get most of the co-op's needs met, loading dock and adequate parking, the additional space that the organization needs. I am really worried, however, about the continuity of operations because from my experience, when you're trying to hook up a 6,000-square-foot building space to an existing 6,000-square-foot space, and what's in the existing space is food and groceries and a lot of refrigeration, there's going to be a lot of dust and dirt and stuff flying around, and I don't know if it can be done. We absolutely have to be here from NDC as to how they can promise that they can sustain the co-op's continuity, and I'm certainly anxious to hear about that, just as co-op members are. Finally, I would just sort of say that partly in jest here is that for many months over the last two years, we have been criticized for going much too fast with the planning and development process, and now, we're being criticized for going much too slow in the development process. And we've had some people here tonight to sort of say, you know, don't hesitate to go back to square one if necessary. So, we're getting mixed, we get mixed signals, and I'm not complaining. I'm a politician. I'm supposed to just accept that and deal with it, and I do. I mean, I say a politician. It always sounds like a pejorative word to me. I'd rather think of myself as a democratically elected representative of the people, but it's too big of a mouthful. Again, I'm optimistic that we're going to get this done. I hear what was said tonight, that you want the city to take a more directive role in this. I think we are doing that or we're going to do that, and I'm confident that things are going to start moving more quickly. If they're not, I'm going to be just as frustrated and noisy about it as you are. Thank you.
Now, Councilmember Chris.
Thank you. I guess the lawyers can talk now since you used a more pejorative word, which is politician. I guess I would just start off by saying, I think tonight represents why I love this community. I think that's why I decided to do this job, and I appreciate you all making time to come out here and express your concerns because it's what makes our community so great. Tim made a comment about, or Councilman Mail made a comment about how this is a small business when we talk about NDC. I should also note that it's a minority-owned business, and it reflects, I think, a lot of the good sort of small-town development that pays attention to the community and why it was selected, as I look back in that process. A very relevant comment by Ms. Dixon-Briggs, I think it was, that you said, you know, people jokingly say that if the Facebook comments that you see on Facebook were to run for Commander in Chief, you would have Donald Trump, right? I think the same goes for the facts that are on listserv sometimes. If they were to run for fact-checker-in-chief, you know, I think you would have that kind of a situation. I think what you have is a lot of competing views, passionate views, which is what makes our listserv so great, but I think there is some misinformation out there, but as your elected leaders, we also owe it to you to advise you about where we are in the process. And I would urge you that where we are at the process, I think, is very consistent in terms of the passions that everybody has expressed tonight. I think people talk about my tidbit last week about driving to the co-op with my mom and talking about the frustration of getting down Sycamore, which is a narrow street, and waiting at that intersection, but getting to the co-op to get those specialty foods that we so much enjoy, I think not only reflects how I feel about the co-op and its importance in this community, but also expresses and represents some of the anxiety that exists with its development and what you expect in the future. But I agree with my fellow colleagues that I think we all expect, as we move forward, that there's going to be some inconvenience. But the gentleman who is sitting in the front here, as he talks impassionately about bringing his coffee shop as a community member to that junction, I think that gives you some insight as you look back at the April 2015 resolution about our focus as a council, or the last council, to encourage local businesses to come into that eventual development. So, I'd like you to think about that, and I think this last week for me has really embodied this community and I think where the council is on this. I can only speak for myself, but Marilyn and I had a very helpful discussion on Sunday, and we sat down and talked about her concerns. I talked with a number of community members about their concerns, and when you talk about this idea about this most favored nation status that Neil used, which is such a great term for the co-op, I would urge you all to look at the April 2015 resolution, which is sort of, which sets the general aspirational parameters of this city and how we negotiate. city and how we negotiate with NDC moving forward and what this development is to look like. For example, it says, establishment of a mutually acceptable, acceptable working relationship with the TPC, TPSS co-op that assures its current and future operational expansion needs. A separate whereas clause, the city council recognizes the important role of the co-op that it will play as an anchor tenant in the location, and NDC has indicated it will work to assure the co-op's continuity of operations during construction, the very things that you all are raising today. And finally, the council seeks the following, early resolution between NDC and the co-op regarding the co-op's long-term role as an anchor tenant in an expanded structure at the junction. So that is a resolution that the previous council has already passed. That is, I know these, many of you perceive this process of working with these awful lawyers to, to work towards a negotiation. But these are the guiding principles of what we are going back and forth with our council on without divulging attorney-client privileged information. But that is essential to our negotiation as we move forward. And I will note, you know, we talk a lot about lawyers. I take issue with that. But the co-op has very able lawyers that represent their interests as well with NDC. And frankly, it's not unknown to most people that each of these three lawyers that work for each of the counterparties have done numerous deals together. So they have a working relationship. So as you think about this process, which I know is going on between counterparties at the current time, I hope that you trust that as your elected officials up here, we are very mindful of what your concerns are, and that as we move forward in this process, we are going to get a result that I believe, and we will fight, that I believe that will result in something that reflects this community. And I don't believe this idea of the co-op's business continuity and its expansion and NDC's development are mutually exclusive things. I have a little bit more of an optimistic outlook on this, and maybe I'm a little too wet behind the ears, but I really believe that we can move forward with a co-op that remains in our community and with the development that reflects the interests of our community and what our, what our character is all about. So that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Councilmember Colar.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would say everything's been said, but not everybody has said it yet, so. I'm going to say a few of the same things others did, but I'll try to be, I'll try to be shorter. Number one, I think the turnout is amazing, and I understand folks have to head out because this is a long evening, but it was really great to hear such a wide breadth of opinions. And we also got up here a stack of emails and that were sent in by people. And I'm not sure exactly what the process is for sharing that, but I think we should make sure that gets posted. And if anybody reads through all those, you'll be surprised because there's a lot of different views than the views that anyone has, and it's really worth reading all the way through that. So hopefully that can get posted sometime soon. I'm, you know, I guess I'm where Rizzi is in the sense that I was sort of frustrated as an outside observer for a while, and now for the last few months, I'm, I'm seeing the delays firsthand. And obviously, you know, I wish we were further along than we are. I don't think there's any one thing that caused the breakdown as much as just a series of steps or non-steps or slower steps as the mayor outlined them. I think we're at a place now, the, NDC has talked about trying to get a resolution in 30 days. I don't know if that can happen. And maybe the co-op is thinking that it can't, but I think it's reasonable to try that. And when I circulated some material to the, some of the people in the listservs in the area that I represent, I realize not everybody sees that, even the people in the ward I represent, I did say that another 30 days seems reasonable to me. I don't speak for my colleagues up here, but if we're not somewhere good in terms of the negotiations at that point, I would favor us not coming in to quote-unquote "take over" the negotiations, but to work to facilitate a conclusion, whether that's through mediators or assistance of legal counsel or in some other way, so that as Councilmember Mail said, we can really get this part wrapped up. Because, you know, if you look ahead, my kids are out of college, but it will take a long time, even if every mark gets completely hit. So I would favor us after another 30 days, doing what we can to facilitate the completion of that agreement so we can move forward. Also, in the documents I sent around, I talked at the end about how if you look at, you know, the parcel's not very big, and among the things that are on the table for it are, of course, the co-op, and I share the view that that should continue to be an anchor store there. There's also talk about preserving the green space and having a meeting place or open space and having retail, having commercial, and having parking and having a residential component to it. And I mentioned the other day, and it's beginning to seem like I'm in a minority on this, but I think it's worth still holding out for residential. But those seven or eight things I just mentioned, we're never going to get them all in a meaningful way in that one spot. There's just not enough room. And it's a little bothersome to me as a newer member that we're this far along and nothing's been ruled out yet either. So I just would suggest to everybody that, think about it, you're probably not going to be able to get the exact thing you want on this, maybe in anything, but on this in particular. So some of the things that seem like vital sacred cows, and I'm not hinting secretly that I don't want the co-op to be an anchor client, but anchor tenant there, but some of the things that people view as absolutely crucial for them, I don't know, they may not happen. And that's what, that's what the process is going to be. So I encourage people just to sort of keep that in mind. And then a completely unrelated thing, if folks don't mind, and I'm just saying this because it was an experience I had this weekend, a close friend of my son's, who's, my son's in his early twenties, happened to tragically pass away last year. And they just, over the weekend, the family dedicated a bench in his honor in the park between Boston and Montgomery College, is a bench right there with his name on it. Kind of a great, bittersweet experience to go through that on Saturday. So if anyone's just looking for inspiration and maybe to not think for a little while about the, the co-op, in honors of, in honor of our family friend, Miles Ranky, just check that out maybe when you're walking around and walking your dog. Thanks.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for everyone coming here tonight. I think everything has been said now, and I think it sounds like everybody has said it. So I would like to suggest that you all think about taking a break and on June 21st, going to Mark's Kitchen for fundraiser for the Independence Day celebration. Mark has been very generous in supporting community organizations. And on June 21st, again, proceeds from meals will help towards raising funds for the Fourth of July festivities. Also wanted to let you know that the organizers are looking for volunteers to help organize. The committee is, is kind of going through a big transition right now with, it's been a lot of older people organizing this for many years, and now we're looking for new young blood. So I encourage people to consider joining the committee and helping to do the organizing and helping with the, running the event on the day of, the Fourth of July. We're also looking for volunteers to help sell raffle tickets and to be parade judges or participate in the parade. So check out the website. It's TacomaParkFourth.org, or give me a call. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's always good to see the auditorium full. You know, some things, sometimes we talk about really important issues for the city and the region, and there isn't anyone here. So it's good to see all these faces. First, I would like to tell everyone, I know it's taken a long time for us to get where we are now, but city staff, council, legal council, we are all working very hard to come to some resolution on this project. And the comments that we heard tonight, I mean, many people stop us on the street or send us private emails. And when we are talking amongst ourselves, we do relate those comments. So this process is not just us like in a vacuum, just us in a room trying to figure this out. We are taking into consideration what you guys are telling us. And there are a lot of moving parts. You have the co-op, which is a nonprofit slash for-profit business, whatever you want to consider them. You have NDC, a small developer, has done a lot of great projects in DC. I encourage everyone to take a look at them. And then you have city staff and council. This is the first development project that we have undertaken. So it's going to take a lot more time, I would think, than other places like the District of Columbia that has a more streamlined process to get a project to fruition. So we are working on this. We are moving forward, and we are listening to you guys, residents. But on another note, I would like to invite everybody to a community meeting hosted by Washington Venice Hospital on April 5th. It starts at 6:30. It is to discuss what's going to be the future of the hospital's campus. As many of you know, the hospital certificate of need was approved. And so at this meeting, we're going to start discussing for the vacant space that is going to be on the campus, what can we do there? And I think many of these ideas will not be healthcare-related. So thank you very much.
All right. Just a couple of other things. I do want to thank everyone again for coming out this evening, and thank you, Marilyn, for your comments. I want to make sure we get a copy of those. A couple of other items I want to thank Jill Fiesley, because on Tuesday, I was able to deliver some Meals on Wheels for March for Wheels, which happens this week every year in March. People who normally don't volunteer, public officials come out and do Meals on Wheels. And so I just want to thank Jill Fiesley for all her work in our community delivering meals every day. The other thing to mention is this morning, I had the opportunity to have a meeting with a number of other mayors in the area with the county council president, Nancy Florine. And I know there are some members of the audience who are interested in the ZTA that Hans Reimer had been working on regarding the Airbnbs for shorthand. That has been sent to the planning board. And they are going to be conducting community meetings and looking into the issues, with it possibly coming back in the fall. So that be on the lookout from the planning board for community meetings, but at the moment, there is no ZTA going forward on this. I think those are all the announcements I have for this evening. City manager?
Thank you. Did have a mention this evening about the Carroll Avenue Bridge renovation. And despite the confusing information put out by the SHA, we're trying to keep the information that we put out correct and frequent. The Maryland State Highway Administration will be closing the section of Sligo Creek Parkway between Old Carroll and Maple Avenue during the middle of the day from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, starting March 28th and lasting between three to five days. This is so they can bring in some heavy, I guess, materials for the, for the bridge project. There's a lighted message board on the site. There will be detour signs up by Friday. We also, the city will be putting up some barricades on both ends of Jefferson Avenue to reduce opportunity for cut-through on the street. And so the detour route will be Old Carroll, Carroll, Lincoln, and Maple. And we are, as I said, we are having this information on the website, and State Highway has the information, but we're trying to keep it accurate. Yes?
Do you know if the trail will be kept open during this time, or is that going to be?
I, that's a good question. I don't know. I don't know.
I've had some questions from some constituencies about, about that.
I'll find out.
Also, one other question. The first message I saw, or maybe the second or third one, said it would be for two weeks. Has it been reduced now to three to five days, or is that still?
It, it was always three to five days. If for some reason there is some problem and it ends up being longer, we'll get the word out. But we don't know where the two weeks came from.
But that was in one of the messages?
It was in one of the state.
The one I sent around, too.
Right. It was in one of the State Highway messages, but the, but the contractor that is arranging this was, was saying three to five days.
Okay, good.
Yep. Also related to that, as Ms. Braithwaite advised the council, we are looking, we have asked for reconsideration of proposed nighttime demolition in June, when the bridge closure will begin. We expect to receive updated information with two different options, either having the work done at nighttime or work done during the daytime, and the pros and cons of those, so that we can discuss them as a council and make a recommendation then back to SHA. As, as was mentioned by Ms. Braithwaite, there would be four days in different parts of June and in early July, when there would be demolition work that's needed so that the bridge reconstruction project can begin. I also wanted just to let you know that we have some staff going on April 6th to a, a meeting with a number of departments from Montgomery County to discuss mosquito control. And they will bring back information of what we will do in, in the local area related to mosquito control and share that information as part of our messaging related to protection from the Zika virus and, and for any mosquito-related problems. Just a couple updated, just a couple events that are coming up. The annual egg hunt, this Saturday begins at 11:00 AM sharp at Ed Wilhelm Field. And you have to be there at 11:00 AM, and you have to bring a basket if you want to, if your kids want to actually get the eggs. It's a lot of fun. And my excitement always is who is in the bunny suit. So we'll see. The Arbor Day is Saturday, April 2nd. Councilmember Smith mentioned the Washington Venice Hospital meeting that's coming up. And I just want to remind you that Peggy Washington has sent you information on the Maryland Municipal League Convention in June. And so you can get back information to her so she can register you to go. I also do put, did put in here, between the first and second readings of the budget in May, I'm actually going to be out of town. So I've added that information. Yes?
Suzie, I wondered if the fire department has been advised of the upcoming blockage on Sligo Creek Parkway for the bridge and then also for the Carroll Avenue, when they're actually doing the bridge, any changes that we've had in the schedule there?
I believe so, but I'll double-check and, and be assured of that.
All right. Thank you.
A follow-up question on the Carroll Bridge project. You mentioned that the city would evaluate the two options.
Yeah.
And then make, indicate our preference.
Right.
But just to be clear, SHA has no obligation to follow our preference.
That's true.
So explain that.
I think.
Not raise expectations.
I don't want to raise expectations that we have, that we can determine it. That's correct.
But we can try.
Right. And I think that one of the important parts is to let them know also about the various impacts of the two options so that they can make a better decision, too.
And has the schedule changed when the pedestrian bridge will be completed?
I don't know that the schedule has changed. It just needs to be up before the bridge is closed in early June.
It was one of the messages said that it was going to be basically done.
But I guess.
Yes, they were wrong.
Yes. So I want to make sure that.
Yes, the bridge is not there now.
Okay.
I mean, I think that the big things that they're moving in, my understanding was those are pieces of that pedestrian bridge, the large.
I don't know that.
Pieces that, that are what?
They couldn't.
Preassembled.
Right. I knew they were going to do it offsite.
All right. Any other questions for the city manager? I just want to say thank you to Ms. Braithwaite for communicating our concerns about when they were going to close, the fact that they were going to close this week, and we actually did.
We got them to move to at least.
And hopefully it will just be three days. The other thing I forgot to ask is if we could check on the trash can at the Gardens and at Sligo Mill. For some reason, many of us thought it was there, and it is not. So if we could get that. All right. Do we have any legislative updates, either from our city clerk or Councilwoman?
Yeah, we have a number of them.
Okay.
Okay. All right. This is coming from MML. It's kind of lengthy, so bear with me. This has to do with the highway user revenue. This is a priority for the Maryland Municipal League. Legislation requested by MML to restore municipal highway user revenue. This is Senate Bill 585, passed the Senate last week. This legislation, which was introduced to restore municipal transportation funding over the next five years, was heavily amended in the Senate. Just that now only provides an additional 25 million in fiscal year 2018, with no additional funding in the bill in fiscal year 2018.
in fiscal year 2017. Or in fiscal years, or in years subsequent to fiscal year 2018. The members of the Senate are relying on the inclusion of special grants in FY17 budget to bolster local government funding in the coming fiscal year, but thus far have declined to address any predictable future funding, other than the $25 million for municipalities in FY18. In assuming SB 585 passes the General Assembly, it does not guarantee an additional $25 million in FY18, and gives municipalities a base on which to build future transportation monies beyond FY18. And it gets worse. It is important to note that the Senate included language in the budget bill tying the disbursements of the FY17 special grants to the passage of legislation this session to express the intent of the General Assembly to fund local government HURs. However, on the other side, the House did not accept this language that mandates that the bill be passed in order to allocate the special transportation grants to local governments. This means that the bu, bill will go into conference, and once a bill goes into conference, anything can happen. So we hope we're going to get a trans, or highway user revenue bill out of the General Assembly this year, but they're, we're not as hopeful as we were when the session first started.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Just, just so people recognize, the magnitude of this is in, in the range of $300,000 versus what we would otherwise get, so.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah. Going on to another very important program for us is Program Open Space. In a move not unheard of in the General Assembly, legislation originally intended to protect and restore Program Open Space, SB 927 and HB 1464 has been set aside, of course, and many of the original provisions are now included in a related piece of legislation, HB 462, which is now entitled Program Open Space. So we're not going to protect it like we were before. Use of funds has now been amended to include many of the provisions in the original Program Open Space legislation, and is supported by the Partners for Open Space. The bill, as amended, will be heard in the Senate Budget and Taxation Committee on March 24th. The amended version of the bill may be viewed, or if you send me an email, I'll send you a copy of the bill. Let's see here. There were a couple bills regarding open meetings training. The bill number is HB 823. The biggest thing, before this bill was amended, it was trying to make sure everybody associated with the municipality had to go through open meetings training. Number of amendments have been submitted, and so right now, we're trying to make it so that if you are on a committee, a chair of a committee, a member of the council, or senior staff, you would be the only persons required to take open meeting training. And let's see here. One final bill, the Police Body Camera Bill passed the House of Delegates. This establishes a framework for viewing and disseminating footage from a police body camera. As many of you probably already know, the city Tacoma Park police officers already have police body cameras. So this is a really important bill, and it will be, the bill will be sent to the Senate Judicial Proceedings Committee. I don't know if you want to talk about the freestanding emergency rooms?
Well, just, I'll just note that there's been lots of behind-the-scenes discussions on the House and Senate bills that would facilitate freestanding medical facilities on hospital campuses or former hospital campuses. The, the bill that is currently out there would not apply to Washington Adventist Hospital. There's an awful lot of work being done to try to allow it to be that. And it gets compli, complicated by all of the other issues that are going on about hospitals across the state of Maryland. I just want to assure people, I'll be going to Annapolis on Friday for a particular meeting that, that I hope helps advance that. It may not happen this year, but the, the work has been really quite remarkable, and the discussion's been really quite remarkable in Annapolis on this subject. And there is a strong knowledge now that it's important to have the option for Washington Adventist Hospital to have a freestanding medical facility on its site, so.
Can I just follow up on that with a couple of questions?
Sure.
The first is that bill crossover just happened, is that right?
Yes.
So Senate bills go to House, House bills go to Senate? And anything that doesn't move is dead?
Basically.
Okay. And then on the, so on the freestanding emergency rooms, are there bills in both houses, or did one-
Yes.
So they both swapped places now?
Right. I mean, they, they were the same bill, so.
You're right. But they weren't separately, they weren't amended in different ways?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay. So both bills look the same. Are there any of our, either our state senator or our three representatives in the, in the House of Delegates, are they on the key committees that are considering those bills?
Actually, I don't think so, but, but we have some pretty good access to the chair of the main committee that's working on it.
Okay. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. We will, since our attorney is here, let's move on to our voting issues and take a break in a bit. The first voting item we have this evening is a first reading ordinance requiring the registration of vacant properties and establishing vacant property maintenance and security standards. We had two work sessions on this prior to coming this evening, and I don't know, Ms. Pearlman, would you like to walk us through where we are with this?
Sure, sure. There really have only been minor changes since the last version you looked at, and they're shown in bold and underlined on the ordinance. We added a whereas clause about the council reviewing this vacant property registration program within two years. Added clarification that the owner includes a personal representative, sometimes called executor, of an estate. Addition of various provisions which would allow the city to grant an owner of vacant property, extension of time for good cause to register a property, where if construction had ceased, but there was good cause for the stoppage, then the time limits could be And I added some language under 6.38.110 on page eight about the posting of notices to confirm that they shouldn't be lit up, they can't be larger than eight and a half by 14 inches, and should sort of, in general, be visible from the street, but more discreet, which I believe was the request. And finally, that the effective date is going to be July 1st, which would be the beginning of the fiscal year. If this passes at first reading, I'm probably going to add a provision under page six of 10, 6.38.090, which is a requirement to keep the information current, to expressly provide that if a building becomes occupied, that they should notify the city and request to be removed from the registry.
Thank you. And also, I know I, we circulated some, a draft of an ordinance that county council member Tom Hucker is also working on. I believe that was sent to your office, just to make sure there didn't seem to be any conflicts or anything.
I don't think I saw it. I wasn't aware that he was working on something like that. I saw some, something on my own neighborhood list serve about it, but I didn't.
Okay. Well, we can double check in between first and second reading.
Yeah.
I believe perhaps someone else looked at it in your office. My reading of it is I didn't necessarily, but it would be good to have you look at it.
Sure. I will do so.
Great. Before I ask for someone to move this ordinance, is there any general questions or comments? Councilmember Mael?
No, no comments.
Okay, sorry.
Let's go to voting.
Okay. Go for it. Nothing? Okay. So with someone, oh, Councilmember Schultz.
Sorry, I couldn't let you get away with it.
Yep.
No comments. I just wanted to point out that I, I do support the intent of this bill, and basically, as it's, as it's drafted, although I will be looking over it very carefully. I guess my, my overriding concern is that this is a good step, but it's a small step towards addressing the problem of persistently deteriorated housing in the city, some, some of which, some of them are vacant, but a lot of them are occupied, but they're still in very deteriorated, chronically deteriorated condition. And there's a whole host of reasons for that. We'll go into that now. So I, I don't, what I'm just, my point is, is that while I think this is a good first step, we need to continue to look at other ways in which we can figure out how to tackle these really persistent houses that just seem to defy what you would hope would happen, which is that they would get notices of violation, and then they would say, okay, well, we'll fix it up and conform this thing to the, to the property maintenance code. But the owners either can't, or they just won't. And I, I've met both kinds. Lots of interesting stories, many of them sad. So that's all I really want to say at this point in time.
Okay. With no other general comments, can someone please like to move the ordinance?
I'll move it.
Councilmember Schultz, Councilmember Mael, second. Any other comments or amendments people would like to see before I call the vote? No? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? No? All right. Thank you, Ms. Pearlman, very much. And we look forward to seeing you for second reading. All right. Moving on to our second voting item, it is the second reading ordinance amending our stormwater management fee system. And does the city manager want to say anything regarding this?
Uh, no.
Second reading?
It's pretty, it's pretty straightforward.
It's pretty basic. Okay. Would someone like to move this?
So moved.
Councilmember Smith moved, second by Councilmember Kovar, and second reading ordinance. Would the clerk like to call the roll?
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Kareshi?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Mael?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right. Next, we have the second reading ordinance of FY 2016 Budget Amendment Three. We had discussed this last week, but would the city manager like to just remind folks?
Sure. I'll just go through it very briefly. We have the transfer from one legal account to another legal account to accommodate the money for the, attorney for the Tacoma Junction project. And this transfer takes from one line item that we won't be spending as much this year as we had anticipated. The, one of the important things is that we're recognizing that the Maryland Controller's Office is sending us $453,311 in income tax revenue that it should have sent us before, between the years of 2010 and 2015. And so we are recognizing that revenue. We also had just overlooked in our last year's budget, in this current year's budget, the $21,800 in anticipated revenues from the lease payments made by the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op for parking spaces at the Tacoma Junction lot. One of the more complex items from an accounting standpoint, but it's pretty straightforward here in this budget amendment, is acknowledging what was essentially a refinancing of our community center bond from 2005. We were able to refinance the $1,500, some thousand dollars, so that we saved money in the long run. And that was done in July, but it was not formally identified in a budget amendment, and that needs to be done for auditing purposes. The, there was a request by the state of Maryland regarding our Safe Routes to Schools funds that needed to be identified in separate funds, as opposed to one fund. And that's the summary of the items that are included in the budget amendment, and I can answer any questions that anyone has.
Does anyone have any questions? No? All right. Would someone like to move the ordinance?
So moved.
Councilmember Kovar moved, a second?
Second.
Councilmember Siemens, second. Any comments or amendments? No? All right. This is second reading ordinance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Mael?
Yes.
Councilmember Kareshi?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right. Moving on to our next voting item, this is a, also a second reading ordinance authorizing the law firm of Bregman et al. to perform additional legal services for the Tacoma Park, Tacoma Junction redevelopment project. The city manager, or, sorry, the deputy city manager.
You pretty much covered it, but I'll summarize what I said last week. Originally, when you entered into agreement with Bregman for legal services associated with the development agreement, the original contract authorized up to $30,000. This, this second reading ordinance would authorize their work up to a total of $80,000, an additional $30,000 to finish the drafting and negotiating associated with the development agreement, and $20,000 that would be used to complete the ground lease. So a total of $80,000.
Those are maximums for each of those categories.
Up to, yes.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments on this? Yes, Councilmember Kovar?
One question. So do we get ongoing updates from them as they, you know, engage in fulfilling hours and generating costs? Or how does that work?
We get, we get a monthly itemized invoice from them that spells out everything that they're working on, including meetings, correspondences that they have with various parties, responding to emails. And based on feedback that we've received from council over the last week, in particular, we're going to be providing you all with a weekly update as, into the status of the negotiations between NDC and the Co-op, and, and whatever else Bregman is working on in terms of redrafting the development agreement.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Would someone like to move this ordinance?
So moved.
Councilmember Smith moved, second?
Second.
Councilmember Kareshi? Any other comments or amendments or anything? No? Would the clerk please like to call the roll?
Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Mael?
No.
Councilmember Kareshi?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right. Now we have our consent agenda, and in that, we have a resolution appointing the Tacoma Park Laureate, resolution appointments to the facade advisory board, and appointments to the emergency preparedness. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
Councilmember Mael, someone like to second? Councilmember Smith? All those in favor of the consent agenda, wait, we don't have an ordinance, so we can just say, okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Nope. Consent agenda moves unanimously. All right. I know the Grants Review Committee is here, but I'd ask for maybe like a five-minute break, so you guys can come up and get yourself organized, and then we'll begin. Thank you. You have the community grants program. First, I want to say thank you so much for being here this evening. Sometimes when we set the agenda far in advance, just kind of never know. So we appreciate it and look forward to your report this evening. And they're coming.
So thank you so much for having us today. I'm Lesley Carey. I am in Ward Two, and I'm secretary of the Grants Review Committee.
And I am Gary Cardillo. I am the co-chair of the Grants Committee.
And so we had a meeting of our committee on March 1st to discuss the, you know, is this thing a little too loud for you, or?
No, it's fine.
All right. I feel like I'm a little too much in there. All right. So we met to review the aspects of the current review process and kind of talk through some of those items. In general, the committee is very satisfied with the current processes and procedures currently in place for the grant programs. There were two questions that we were asked by the council in particular to look into. One was, how should mid-year funding requests be handled by the council? In the opinion of the committee, we say to ensure a fair process for all applicants, we suggest that the council advise applicants requesting mid-year funding to apply for the City of Tacoma Park grants during their active cycles, or apply for funding through other sources such as the Tacoma Foundation, which have more than one funding cycle per year. The second question was addressing the three-year funding limitation that we currently have on applications. The limitations were implemented to ensure that grantees would not be dependent upon city funds and seek other funding sources. We support that limitation, but agree that there should be some flexibility around that. So then, another thing that we spent a lot of time on was the funding priorities as written in the program guidelines. We feel like, we think we know what your priorities within those priorities are, but would like a better sense of what you see as the top priorities within this list. And that is, all of them are listed on the work session document. They are provide services to at-risk populations, engage diverse members of the community, promote civic involvement by underrepresented populations, further the economic or environmental sustainability of the community, are offered in partnership with another organization, or are free and open to the public. So, thank you very much. We open for questions and comments, please.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, who would like to go first? Council, councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Appreciate your report. And thank you for delving into some of the questions that we have. Can you take me through the timeline? Once you guys pick, you know, the awardees, right, for the grants, then you give it to us, we pass a resolution. How long is it supposed to take for someone to actually, either they can start submitting invoices and, you know, get the money paid back to them through the grant, or the money for the grant is transferred to the organization? What's the time period?
Do you mean award notification so they can start spending money, or actually dispersment of money from the city?
Both, both. The whole time.
Hello, Sarah?
Look who's behind us.
Once the, no, I'm doing what I told them not to do. Yeah. My apologies for that. Once the awards are made by the council and ordinance is acted on, we then issue a request to the city attorney's office to prepare the required grant agreements. Once the grant agreements are in place and everybody gets them executed, we can start the whole process at that point in terms of making dispersments for the different grantees. What we don't, do not do is, if you get a $15,000 grant award, we don't give you $15,000 and then walk away. So it's all reimbursement-based. The turnaround time in getting the grant agreements back from the grantees is, varies from 15 minutes to six months. So there's no real hard and fast rule as far as how long it will take. What we typically do is give everybody until the end of the fiscal year to complete their project, that, we have a little flexibility with that if it takes a while to get to the point where we actually have a grant agreement. So we can ask them to complete a project that they planned, been planning on making, taking 12 months to do and do it in eight. So we will extend it, but typically, we try to end it at the end of the fiscal year.
And when the contract with the city's attorney, how long does that usually take for it to be drafted? Are there points that need to be negotiated, or is it just boiler point, boiler plate contract, and you just give it to the warty and say, here?
There's a little bit of negotiation because what people ask for is generally not what they get. So then we have to go back through and say, okay, you were requesting $20,000, but you're getting five. What will that do to your budget? And what impact will that have on your work product? How will you have to scale back the project, recognizing that you're getting a quarter of what you needed? So there's some negotiation in that process. Once that's been completed, the rest of it's fairly rote as far as submitting it and getting a grant agreement. We're going through a new process with the city attorney's office as far as how we're requesting contracts and things like that. There are a little, couple of bugs here and there, but we're working that out, so I'm hoping it will be a faster turnaround time.
Okay. All right. Because some people have communicated to me that it just took a very long period of time for the actual contract to be signed, so, and it's boilerplate. I just want to say that for the record.
Yeah. The other challenge, the other challenge we had from a departmental standpoint this last year is that we lost some staff. So then we had to dole every, some staffing issues as far as capacity. So a combination of the longer negotiation, the getting the contracts in place, and having the capacity to do the work being factored into some of that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Mael?
Thank you both for being here on a late night. You could have stood up and commented on the earlier issues too, if you wanted. You know, everybody gets to talk as many times as there are issues, in theory. I appreciate your recommendations on the timing of making grant awards and sticking to the cycle, and I'm happy to follow that recommendation. I think that the, I felt strongly, being on council when we put the three-year recommendation in place, or the three-year limit in place, I feel good that we've been steadily communicating about that limit, so it's not something anyone would be surprised by. And I think it's important that we try it out because it gives us a chance to try to fund new organizations, to build capacity of new projects, new efforts. And I appreciate the discretion you're essentially providing us by saying, you know, some flexibility, but I'd really, I hope that we stick with the idea of a three-year funding limit. In terms of the priorities that you asked for additional guidance on, and maybe this is stating the obvious, but from my perspective, the services to at-risk populations and furthering the economic or environmental sustainability of the community, those are really three priorities that they could all overlap. Those are the top ones. Civic involvement by underrepresented populations, serving underrepresented populations is really the priority for me, and the civic involvement is a second-tier piece. And I sort of feel like the services to at-risk populations is covered by underrepresented, not exactly the same thing though, so I just point out that tension. And then engaging diverse members, offering in partnership, free and open to the public, those to me are second-tier things. So I don't know if that's helpful for you to break a list of six or seven things into top tier and bottom tier, but that's the way I think about it. The last thing is a comment to all of you, as well as to my colleagues, that I favor in this budget year trying to keep our amount of funding for large and small grants at the same level. Or if our budget is difficult, potentially dropping that amount, but I don't expect to propose or support any significant increase in funding levels, but I could be surprised. And I'm really interested in the small, the very small grants we can give to community organizations. So, an apartment building that wants to do a garden, or So, an apartment building that wants to do a garden, or an educational program, a block that wants to do something, a community nonprofit that wants to do a small event. Given how many funding options there are in the county, in the state, in the country in which we live, I really think there's a niche for those small grants and the partnerships that we've created to help try to deliver very small grants. And so, on balance, if I were, be asked to make a choice in terms of shifting a little bit more money one way or another in terms of large and small grants, I'd shift a bit more into smaller grants for those kind of projects. But that's not a specific question that you address, but I just wanted to raise it. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, um, thank you for holding out. I really do strongly support the idea that we keep the funding requests on a schedule and that we avoid these mid-year things because I have witnessed over the years this happening. And it just is like throwing a brick through a glass window. We have somebody coming in and saying they've got a particular need, it's really urgent. And, and it's in the middle, after we've done all this process, and then we find ourselves in somewhat of a difficult situation trying to figure out what to do. So I think it's really important that we stick, make it a regulation. So I like your suggestion.
The city does have an emergency fund that we would direct them toward applying to.
Yeah, whatever, whatever there might be, whether it's in the city or in the county, for example. I like Councilmember Mael's idea of trying to focus on the small organizations. Because to me, a lot of the established entities that are organized as nonprofits and have received grants, they're, they are relatively sophisticated and are aware of other, you know, sources. Whereas like neighborhood associations and groups that aren't even organized will come forward, like, like, like Councilmember Mael was talking about. They don't have that level of knowledge. And so for them, getting money from the city is pretty much it. Or from the Tacoma Foundation is pretty much it. With regard to the funding priorities, are these, in the application, are these funding priorities listed? And are applicants asked to respond as to how their grant would address any or all of these?
Yes, and we also use them in our deliberations of funding priorities.
Okay. Do you find that the applicants, when they have to answer the, to respond to these various things, that their answers speak to these priorities? Or are they confused and not understanding what you're going to? Because what I'm leaning to is maybe from your experience in reviewing these applications, some of which we don't see because they get dropped before they even get that far. Do these need to be clarified, simplified, or elaborated on in some way? So that, so the, the, the inexperienced applicants can do an adequate job of completing an application? Now, I understand as well that you've also spent time, sometimes helping applicants by answering their questions.
Do you want to go?
Through our newly adopted process of using a letter of intent to apply and adopting this new process, we try to flesh out, if need be, with the organization, how their project, specific project, might fit into these priorities if they're not as clear with what our priorities are and how that project fits into them. So we try to help them. If there's, if there's something that they're submitting in a letter of intent that says something that just has nothing to do with the council's priorities, we would let them know that. But if there's something that we, we feel as committee would, we would try to say, well, if you can direct it toward this or that, we try to help them in that sense.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that maybe it might not be a need to wordsmith some of these things just to communicate the idea or the purpose behind each one. And I, I would leave that to your judgment.
Yeah, I think with the application, it is fairly clear of what the priorities are. I think where we were looking for the clarification is within our deliberations.
I see.
Not necessarily what the applicant is providing to us, but how we can interpret what is in the applications.
Different levels of skill in terms of writing applications from different organizations varies from really soup to nuts, or A to Z, I should say. So it, we try to have an open mind with regards to deliberations.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Caresshi?
Thank you, thank you for being here. I would just sort of piggyback on Councilmember Schultz's comments. I know, I actually very much appreciate the spirit of this process and the role that you play. And I also sort of echo Councilmember Mael's comments about my focus on smaller grants and smaller organizations that may not have the capacity to have a grant writer or a grant person who can be as sophisticated to articulate the real need or service they're providing to the community that's consistent with our priorities. So I would ask the grant committee, as you look at applicants, that you keep an open mind and err on the side of, do these, does this organization and its mission actually address the priorities? Versus, there might be some technical defects in their application. And not allow a technical defect, which may just be stylistic or lack of experience in that arena, to overshadow the real purpose and the goodwill that they're going to bring to the community. So I just ask that you focus on that.
Sure. And the council did shunt or farm out the small grants program to the Tacoma Foundation. So that, that enables the city to still adhere to the priorities through the small grants program without burdening us with all the applicants with small and the large. So, they will, they will get taken care of.
Right. And you know, my comment obviously does focus on the small grants, but I think no matter how big the grant is, I would just focus on the purpose behind what the work they're doing and not shy away from anything based on technicalities, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Seaman?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you both for being here this late hour. We got started a little late on our agenda items. I'm not real organized on my comments, so please forgive me. But I think a lot of the things I've heard tonight deal with the small grants. And I think that farming those out to an organization like the Tacoma Foundation has been very beneficial. The, the concerns that have been expressed about the midterm grant requests, I think is one of the biggest issues that we need, we, the council, need to deal with. And that is, I like your suggestion that keep it in the cycle, right? Don't, don't let things come out of cycle. And really, that doesn't affect the grant so much as it affects the council and our budget. Because from what I've seen over the last couple of years, we just find more money to stick into another grant that's out of cycle. But I think it's a real disservice to all of those who do follow the cycle and who do get their applications in, to have these favorite sons or daughters get their, their grant requests filled without having to go through the process and without having to adhere to the schedule, so.
Or compete against other applicants.
Exactly, yeah. And without having to go through the comparison to other requests. Of course, since I voted for all those, I support the ones we've done. But I'd like to see us not, like to see us not do that again, okay? And I'm not sure how we do that, other than we all pledge to vote no to our, our companions who submit other requests. I had to look both ways, just in case somebody was thinking I was looking at them. The, the amounts, and again, I'm going to focus on the grants that you deal with, not the small grants. I've become concerned through the last couple of years that our grants have really crept up in size. And I think it's, I'd rather see more medium-sized grants than having, giving a whole lot of money to any one organization. I think the goals, if we, if we jump down, I told you I'm a little disorganized on this, but if we look at the priorities, you know, my number one priority is providing services to at-risk populations. And I'm certainly supportive of the furthering the economic and environmental sustainability of the community, since that is one of the priorities of the, of the council. But the, offered as a partnership with another organization, I don't think that's a, really a type of grant that we want to give. I guess I'm stammering here. The, I think that's an important factor in grading application. I think it doesn't come to the same level as the other two, okay? But I think that is important and a kind of a tiebreaker. That, not just that it is, they're partner organizations, but that there are, there is a plan for future self-sufficiency. Maybe that's the wrong word. In other words, I want to see a plan that you're not just going to come back here for the next two years and then you're going to die. I want you to know, you as an organization that's applying, to show that, okay, you're asking for this funding this year because you're a fairly new organization. And, you know, this, these are the steps you're going to be taking so that you have, expand your revenue sources or your income sources for future years.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
If you're tasking us with funding these projects, funding projects along the guidelines of these priorities, we have a, we have a rule that says after three years, you can no longer submit for that project.
Right.
Now, if, if you have that rule in place, if you have that rule in place, that allows us the flexibility to say no if they do apply. So if, if they apply again for a different project, we would take that into consideration. But if they apply for the same project, we would just discount it out of hand.
Right. I guess I would like to have some assurance from the organization, though, that they have a plan.
And I think, what I think, what, the whole point there is to make sure that there is something in the application showing. And I'm not sure if we have that in there or not right now. But I think that's a great point of what we should be adding to the application.
Long-term viability, is that?
To have something about long-term viability.
Okay, yeah. I mean, if you could, if you could give us some wording about that.
I've got wording on that.
Yeah, I was going to say, she's probably much more qualified than I am to do that.
Yeah, but I mean, long-term viability makes sense. If we're going to say you can only commit for three years.
Right.
Until we're tasked with, well, we need to see some long-term viability, ability to carry the project beyond the grant year. You know, what are your plans for this project? Is it, it could just be a two-year project or a three-year project. But it may not be.
Right.
You know, where does it have legs after that?
And then the last thing, and I just go back to the money again. I think we haven't been clear, or maybe it's just I haven't been, it hasn't been clear to me, that we have a cap on how much we're willing to give to any one organization. I know that we, we say there's so much money for grants for this year. But I felt that we've spent more money in some areas than, for some grantees, then I think it would have been beneficial to spread it around a little more.
If the council wants to put in like caps, like, oh, you know, $5,000 cap or $4,000 cap below what the current cap is.
We do have, there is a cap of a, an organization only receiving two grants per cycle.
But aren't there also within individual category, there's a minimum and a maximum set, yeah.
But if you want to lower that cap even further, I mean, that's entirely up to the council.
Oh, not yet.
Okay. That's what I'm talking about, but it seems that, yeah, I guess that is what I'm talking about, the maximum.
I mean, if you do want to spread it around to more organizations or more projects, a cap, you know, lowering the cap from where it is now would add to that, would lead to that.
Okay.
Better lead to that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Just a few quick things. Thank you for being here. I was, I've been on a few committees in the past, and it's probably often a thankless task. On the priorities, as several others suggested, I think to me, providing services to at-risk populations is the top one. I would elevate that above the others. I think some of the others are, it might be nice, like five and six if they, or the fifth and sixth bullet point, if they happen to be there. But I wouldn't, to me, I wouldn't build it around that. I think we need to do more generally for at-risk or underserved populations. So that would be my top one. Councilmember Caresshi mentioned the technical errors. And, you know, just, it so happens that when I was working at HUD, you can imagine the number of grants that come in and it all goes through a central process, not even for that agency, but for all federal agencies. And there would occasionally be errors. And sometimes the grant system, the Grants dot GO system didn't work. And I seem to spend a lot of my time running around trying to get people in this bureaucracy of 10,000 or so at HUD to actually give people a second chance. So, and when it happened, it was, you know, well deserved. So I would just encourage you not to, as I think Councilmember Caresshi said, to, when it's something just technical, if they leave out something that's substantive that they should have put in, I don't have a problem with turning it down. But if it's purely technical, like a cover sheet thing, I would suggest finding a way to give them another shot at correcting that.
So just to clarify, so when we receive, you know, the LOI or the application, if there is something missing from their application, at that point, the, you know, would that application come to the committee first? Or would that be something that city staff would make sure that the application was absolutely complete before we received it?
For instance, oh, this organization didn't include a match. They're asking us for X number of dollars for a project that costs X number of dollars.
To me, that's not a technical error. That's a substantive error.
Okay.
I'm talking about things that might just have left off.
But would it get held up at Sarah's desk, at staff desks before it comes to us? You know what I mean?
You know, this is my first time through the cycle. I don't know enough about that. I just kind of don't want that to happen. And whether it should be you guys or Sarah, I defer to you and Sarah.
What's the history on that?
We call them up and tell them they're missing something.
Just two other quick things. In the operational grants, so one of the outside groups that I was involved in before, just when they were getting started, is a very small neighborhood nonprofit. And they got money from Tacoma Foundation and maybe from the city. And I'm talking about just a few thousand dollars. That was for things like incorporating and getting your nonprofit status and getting insurance and things like that. Is that what is meant by operational? Or is it something different? Because those are the things that sometimes make a difference between whether a group even can exist or get off the ground.
Sure, building organizational capacity.
I think a lot of that has probably gone to Tacoma Foundation now. But is that part of what you can do here still, too?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's not just, we don't necessarily just give to a food pantry to buy food. But if there's an organization that really needs to get to that next level of organizational capacity, and they present a really compelling application to us, and we see history of great work, they have, they're starting to put things together with regards to the size, the makeup of their board, or if they, you know, if they are, need to really get over that hump with regards to, they came in with a lead agent, a fiscal agent last time, and they want to incorporate themselves, we would definitely consider that.
Good. Very last question?
Yep.
So if an application comes in from an organization that maybe you don't know about, is it just whatever's in the application? Or could you kind of check around a little bit and see what they're like?
My philosophy, right.
I just finished. The reason I'm asking is because when an application comes in from a group that you do know, then you're also, even if you're not supposed to, obviously, you'll be taking into account their past history, whether you intend to or not. So how do you balance that out?
My philosophy is to. My philosophy is to look at what is on the page, what is in the application, and any knowledge that I have otherwise is not necessarily what's on that page, and so that's not being considered in the review. But I may not, that, that's my personal thing. I don't know if that goes for other reviewers.
The committee, we like to think that the committee is a, provides a wide range of views and wide experiences within the community, so you might bring something you know about this organization, or he may bring something he knows about this organization, which could help us in our deliberations, but help it, but not dictate it more so than what's on the application. But we do, we do like to try to find out as much as we can about the organization, I think.
From the application.
From the application, and from, maybe some questions directed to them for clarification purposes.
I guess the only thing I would warn against, and then I'll stop, you know, you do bring, not you, but anyone would bring unconscious, you know, knowledge of, if it's, you know, I don't know, just to make up a group, you know, the July 4th group, of course, you know them whether you want or not. So if you're a strict constructionist, you know, Justice Scalia likes to say, he only looks at what's written there, but he actually has all kinds of prejudices, or he did, that he used to make these decisions, so try to be aware of that.
I hope you're not calling me Scalia.
No.
I like Roman candles, and if I see those up there, I'm going to be more inclined to, to, you know, to give a thumbs up to.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions, and this one may be for Ms. Daines. Just stepping back for a minute, was there any time that was, there was like a sort of a vision statement set up for the community grant program? Because I didn't see it on the website. Like, what, do we have, like, a statement that says, what's the purpose of this?
Yep.
Sorry. And I'm sorry, I didn't give you this question earlier.
The community grant program was adopted by resolution in the city council, so it would be in there. Now you're going to give me a bad time right now. I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's part of the resolution.
I saw it actually on the city website today, so, yeah.
Do you remember where it's at?
Something, no, I don't.
No.
I was going to make something up. This is, this is on the record.
Okay. No, I just, thank you for that. I could have looked it up myself, too. I have a couple of the questions. The, so we have these three program areas. Are those working? You didn't necessarily talk about that. Does that seem to be the cultural STEM, the capital projects, and, is that work, is that framework working for you, for the committee?
It's interesting. I think last cycle, we, sorry, last cycle we went through, and I think we either didn't have any capital, or we only had one.
Actually, I did the numbers report. Because I was kind of curious about that as well, because there are three categories, and just this past year, for example, we received six applications for capital funds, which is a very specific program, and it has a very tight turnaround time, so that's not unusual. And then we received an equal number of applications for both the operating and program grants, as well as the STEM and cultural grants. So that was 16 for each of those programs. So altogether, last year, the committee reviewed 38 applications, ended up inviting 28 of them back to submit additional information, and then 16 were actually funded.
Okay. And then regarding the, the funding priorities, I just want to understand, I think something you said in response to Councilmember Schultz, is it that it's hard to interpret these priorities when people give you their application? I'm trying to figure out what's the, what do you need from us?
What we need from you is while, when we're sitting and deliberating, one person may feel very passionate about one particular priority and another about another, or something along those lines, and where we're figuring it out.
Prioritize the priorities.
Yes, exactly.
Great. Okay. So if we'd be helpful, if we gave you direction, and is it reducing this list? Is it necessarily?
Not necessarily. No, it's, it's not necessarily reducing the list, it's just a matter of within the priorities, which are the weighting the priorities, is how we were wording it before.
It seems clear that the council sees the first bullet point as the top priority. Below that, it's kind of gumbled, but.
All right. Anybody else? Councilmember Koreshi?
Madam Mayor, according to the city website, the duties and responsibilities of this great committee are to evaluate grant applications based on established program priorities, program guidelines, and available funding, and to forward funding recommendations to the city council for consideration.
Oh. I don't necessarily call that a vision statement.
I think that's a different statement.
Yeah, I won't look for it, but maybe, yeah. Ms. Daines? Sorry, I think I did your exercise.
It's one of two resolutions that impacts this group. That's the resolution that actually establishes the committee, and then there's another formal action that was taken by the council, which set forth the program guidelines that you're chatting about this evening. So it should be in there, I hope.
Tried.
All right. Sorry. All right. So I think in order to give you a bit of direction, I just want to do some quick hand votes, some straw votes, because I think people commented on all these, but I want to make sure. Regarding the mid-cycle funding requests, what I heard was most folks agreeing with the committee's recommendations. Can I see a show of hands for all those who support or agree with the committee's recommendation on not doing mid-cycle funding requests? I think you have six out of seven on that one. The limitation on consecutive grant awards, do people agree with the committee's recommendation on keeping the three-year, what is it, maximum in place? All those, raise your hand if you agree with the committee's recommendation, and that is unanimous. Now, regarding the funding priorities, I heard a number of council members talk about the providing services to at-risk populations. I'd just like to see a quick show of hands on, would everyone agree, or raise your hand if you agree, that that would be one of your top priorities under the funding priorities? Okay. And that is everyone. I'm trying to figure out the way, how to give you direction on the other funding priorities at the moment, so I'm feeling like we need to think about that. And another question I have for you is, would it be helpful, maybe, and you don't, if you don't have an answer tonight, what is helpful for, for us ranking this list, for us to come back, giving some kind of like, this is 80%, this is, you know, and then these others are five, like, what would-
I'd say whatever works best for you.
All right.
Someone can send something out to the council, just as a, as a poll, kind of-
Yeah.
Online, and then get that information back.
Are there anything that came up in your discussions that you would add to this list in terms of priorities, so that you could evaluate? I know Councilmember Siemens talked about long-term viability of the organization.
Yeah, you just mentioned long-term viability, and if that's an important council priority, I would definitely put it in there.
Possibly add it.
Where you put it in there, up to you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Great. All right. Well, if you have any other thoughts on additions to that list, or things that you would say, you know what, take this off because it's annoying, no, I don't know. As you're deliberating, just let us know, and then we'll get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Our last work session tonight is regarding synchronizing the Tacoma Park elections with state and federal elections.
Great.
We've got three members of the Board of Elections here tonight, including, well, we have Marilyn Abbott, who's the chair of the board, and Arthur David Olson, and Beatrice York are here this evening, and I think Marilyn was going to convey what the committee had, what the board had talked about, and then you have in front of you what I had prepared, and I know there are a lot of questions, and anxious to see what you are thinking, and happy to answer questions.
The Board met on March 14th, and when we met, we had not yet heard back from the state for what the deadline would be for being able to be on the ballot with the state in 2018. We continued our meeting and talked about two plans, the Plan A and the Plan B, just to get some grounding for ourselves, and our Plan A was talking about a unified ballot and what might be necessary to get to a unified ballot. We looked at, or talked briefly about the code and the charter would both need major revisions. There's a lot of procedural in there, and there's a lot of dates that interact that would need to be looked at. We also talked about the challenges of working with the state on how to be able to have our Tacoma Park voters, people who meet our qualifications to vote, which may be different from the state, to incorporate them into voting with the state. And the, we talked about the need to incorporate the IRV, both ballot design and ballot counting into a unified ballot, and also the county, when Jesse and I had met briefly with the County Board of Elections, the county said that we would need to develop an IRV training module. Just briefly, a little bit separate, we talked about possible changes to IRV, or ways to handle IRV differently, maybe have the state just give us the first round of voting, maybe limit to first two or three choices on IRV voting, but we did discuss IRV and its issues quite a bit. We also talked about Plan B, which would be synchronization of the dates, and we talked in particular about, we looked at Ocean City as a model of having a separate election, but co-located with the state. So in Tacoma Park on Election Day, we would have the four locations, probably City Hall, and what some of the challenges of doing that would be. Some of that would be internal ways of being able to register new voters, or how would we handle registration on the same day? Would we need a communication between the locations, and just how that would work, how to handle maybe if somebody came to the wrong polling location, whatever. We also talked about the early voting challenges, because early voting's handled differently than Election Day, and on early voting, we talked about an idea of maybe either at some of the locations, or one of the early voting locations, a possibility of way to handle it would be having election workers outside the polling, the early voting location, and we would give out absentee ballots. You know, we were just trying to, as I said, we gave it a Plan A, a Plan B, what could be involved with it. We did talk a little bit about the challenge of if the date that came back from the state was August, not February, and whether we thought that could be met or not. And on the calendar, yes, that can be met, but it would be a push, and it might be a, in particular, when you start looking at possible changing the code and charter, it might be a little bit something we might want to think more about the changes and make sure we really are into things. But also looking and thinking about possible of the August date coming back, we talked about, well, maybe it would be a two-step process, and maybe coordinate the date and then work for a later date on unifying the ballot. But we really were sitting, and as I said, we had a Plan A and a Plan B, and discussed them, but we really didn't go much further because of the uncertainty of what the state was going to say. So that sort of gives you a summary of where we were.
Thank you. Does Seckel have anything to add, or?
Oh, so, so we heard definitively that the calculation as to when we would have to submit a request to be on the ballot in 2018, the deadline would be August 27th of 2016. That is like tomorrow, when you're talking about something like this. The, the law indicates that we would have to have amended the charter and had met certain criteria before we could put in the request, and if, if the council really wanted to go that way, I had put out a charter amendment schedule, I think I sent it out to you, but you would almost have to, as Councilmember Kovar suggested, you would almost have to start the charter amendment before you made the decision to do that, given the timing of the thing. I, I think the state, the message I got from both the state and the county is they're perfectly willing to work with us. This primary election for them is a huge deal, and really, the request was to not force it right now, to, to wait until after the primary, so that they can work with us.
Can I just ask a question? So what's strange about that is they're saying, don't, you know, not, don't ask us, but we're not going to do much for you now because of the primary. Why would they possibly want us to give it to them in late August, when they're clearly not going to do anything with it until after the November elections? And so I'm wondering if we could, I mean, do we have to submit everything, or just say, hey, we're planning to do it, and we'll give you the details afterwards? That would be really important to know.
Right, exactly. So we could have, the request was, that I heard was, we could have the conversation after the primary, and I think before you'd want to submit the request, the formal request to be on the ballot, you want to know the answer before you ask, before you put in the request, I think. I think we'll want to know what, that we've covered all the bases before the request goes in, that, that was my thing.
Right, but I mean, is it your sense that they would actually look at it in September or October?
August 27th is the deadline. So we have until then to submit the request. What, what we were, what I've been thinking all along is that we'd want to work through the different options with them, in terms of what's possible and what is impossible, and what's possible and what it might cost, just, not that that's the deciding factor, but it is a factor. So we'd want to know, how could we handle instant runoff voting? One of the things that the board stressed is that early voting has to be the same everywhere. So the thought is, in Montgomery County, there are now 10 early voting sites. The thinking is, and this could change, but that our ballot would have to be in all 10 early voting locations. So that means everybody and all the judges have to be trained on how to deal with questions about IRV and how to, how to handle that. Haven't even approached the, well, the Tacoma Park only voters, there are a variety of ways to handle them, and really, we know it's technologically possible to do all this, but whether there's, we can get the state to the point where they feel they can do that for us, I don't know what the answer to that is, or how long it will take to get from here to there.
But can I just clarify one question, because, so the primary is April 26th, so basically what you're hearing is, on April 29th, or whatever, we'll start answering your questions, or whenever, they can rest a little bit. And we get the information, but then it's not, we have until April 27th to make the decision.
August 27th.
I'm sorry. August 27th, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's not like they're going to help us before we have to make the decision. I, I think I was getting a bit confused on the-
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we want to work with them before the, our, your final decision is made, rather than, because the charter amendment has to be done before the formal request goes in, you don't want to do that unless you know what's going to happen at the other end of that. That's, that's my thinking again.
Well, you're, you're, you don't want to do that, you don't want to finally approve it. We would start the process.
Exactly, exactly. So you could start the process, but it's more than just changing the date. There are other things that would have to be changed. It's, there, I, I believe, and we haven't had the city attorney look at it yet, but I think I had looked at some of the texts and sent it around to the board, I think there are quite a few things that would have to be changed, and the question is, one of the questions I posed to the city attorney is, what can come out of the charter? What has to stay in the charter, and what can come out of it? And that would help simplify things, if, if some of the things could come out, because the code can be amended more quickly than the charter.
And so why wouldn't we be required to have a primary?
We wouldn't. We're nonpartisan, our, our elections are nonpartisan, and not every, not everyone has a primary.
Okay.
I mean, not all contests include primaries.
Even though we're, we would be synced with the state?
Well, for the general election. There, there are different ways you could decide how, you could follow your exact same process with the nominating caucus, you would just do it at a different time. You would just do it at a different time, for instance. Or you could incorporate a petition process to have candidates get on the ballot. Or you could just come one, come all, and pay a filing fee. There are options that, I don't think, as I read everything, I don't see the state getting involved in that. It's what happens, how soon, when we have to have the nominations, when we have candidates to put on the ballot. Those are the kinds of deadlines we have to consider.
And candidate filing deadlines would change, not just relating to the election itself, but there are some filing deadlines that we looked at that would change. And also there was, this is minor, but there's an interaction also between the elections chapters and the ethics chapters that we would want to make sure that they got integrated if there were change on it.
Councilwoman Malle, did you have a question?
Yeah, a question in the comments.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I just note that when we were discussing this, so I think about a year ago, but maybe nine months ago, the state board had at that time told me, and I relayed that in this body a number of times, including in writing, that it was going to be 18 months. We had to tell them 18 months. So to me, this isn't a surprise that we'd have an August or July deadline. And I think, just because it was very clearly communicated by the head of the board of, the state board of elections.
May I just, so one thing about that, what the confusion was about was it 18 months before the primary or 18 months before the general, not the election, but the filing deadline? It turned out that it was 18 months before the primary election.
Isn't July, isn't August 2016 18 months before the general?
No, it's 18 months before the filing deadline, before the deadline that a certificate of candidacy has to be filed.
Okay.
I'm sorry, so August is two years before the election. And if we don't have to have a primary, why would August apply?
That's what the law, that's how the law is written.
Jamie Raskin.
Yeah, okay. Get the law changed.
He did. He was the lead sponsor, I believe, on the law that made this possible. I think my understanding was that Ocean City, they ran one election synced but separate lines. And I thought that they had then put together the request to the state to sync, but ultimately decided not to use it. So I would assume that their, I mean, we have some special considerations, but their paper file, their process would be relevant to us and that could be informative. And you may have already talked to the clerk for Ocean City, but you know, just sort of figuring out, getting a copy, for example, of what they submitted to the state, getting an understanding of the back and forth that they had with the state, you know, may be informative for us either way. So that's a separate comment. I really strongly favor having our city attorney very soon look at the charter, and for lots of reasons way beyond this, just try to figure out which parts of all the technicalities of running our election really must be in the charter and which could be taken out. And one of the examples I give for that is, for example, the new federal laws around overseas voters and how we really don't comply with those right now. We sort of can't. But that's an example of something that's changed that would be, you know, ideally, like, we don't probably have a lot of overseas voters, but, you know, that's an example of something that if it weren't, didn't take a charter change to figure out, it would be nice to be able to do. So I think the idea of creating the sync and the timing, you know, the, whatever it is, the first odd Thursday or Tuesday in November of an even year, like, whatever that language is, having that be the sort of bare minimum in a charter, it would be really nice to see that text soon. And just in general, my expectation initially before understanding Ocean City's experience was that I would have much preferred a single ballot in a single line, was that, given that Ocean City saw extremely high turnout or very, very high numbers of people who went from the state ballot line to the city ballot line, I can't remember if it was 94 or 97% the first time they did it, but it was something very high, at least by the data that their clerk had provided to me, that made me much less concerned about having two lines. So I sort of thought, well, everybody's going to stand on one line and then they're going to say, I'm going to go to the beach, that that would be what happened. And it didn't look like that happened. So I am open to both options. I'm open to the, I think, as the clerk described, or Marilyn, you may have described it, trying to do the syncing in 2018 and then, you know, 2020, try to talk about or figure out whether we want to do the one ballot. I'm open to sort of any of those scenarios. I still sort of lean toward the single ballot, but accept the technical, the list of technical questions you just raised. But I'd love us to get our attorney working on charter language sooner rather than later.
Councilman Schultz?
You, Scott, you responded to Councilmember Kovar. Mike's not on. Mic's on, okay. You responded to Councilmember Kovar's question about, they were saying that the board of elections was too busy prior to the primary to handle anything that we needed for them to pay attention to. But I'm also thinking that if the November ballot is coming right up and we're, aren't we going to run into the same kind of question there as well as that, well, they're going to be preoccupied with putting on a presidential election as well as some other stuff?
The difference is, this primary, they are still figuring out last-minute procedures on, with the new equipment. It's, there's a lot of effort at all levels going into making this election, this primary election work.
So we were, I guess the delegation went down to Ocean City to kind of see how that works. My understanding, I'm quite, question, wondering about the comparability. I mean, Ocean City's year-round population is somewhere between, I believe, 3,000 and 4,000 people. I mean, in the summertime, it goes up to 300,000 to 400,000 people. So I think my numbers, my recollection is correct. And then I would imagine that some of those, of that population is maybe even absent because of the nature that it's a seasonal area. So I wonder what the quantity of votes are in Ocean City when they do their voting.
I have the information, if I can just pull it up quickly. I think we're talking about 6,300 voters. Bear with me for a minute. Interestingly, I'll share one thing, what, and again, we want to talk to the chair of their board of elections, but the, the information I got is that when people come into the convention center to vote, they start with the city. That's their first, their first stop is the city election. Almost everybody stops there. But they have one polling place and it's.
Oh, they have one polling place for the whole city?
Yep. And one early voting site for the whole county. So it's a much.
The whole county or the whole city?
Whole county.
They love election turnout, so.
I mean, I say, I mean, because Marilyn, you were talking about the possibility that under Plan, Plan A or Plan B, either one, that our voting would be dispersed around four different voting locations.
We discussed the possibility of if we had, of just having the voting remain here, which means our voters for the election would have to come here and go to their regular voting place. And I believe there are going to be four, only four polling places this election in Tacoma Park.
Yeah.
So we talked about.
Okay. I just wondered.
Dispersing it that way and still maybe having the city be open.
I'd like to, okay, ask Councilmember Malle, that's, does that seem like a big difference between how Ocean City copes with this thing where they have one voting place for no matter what, as opposed to our going from one, one location, which we have now, to four, I guess, because we have these various precincts?
Yeah. I mean, I just, I talked, I've talked to people fairly frequently, completely separate from this, who are like, why can't I vote in my normal voting location for my city election? So they resent having to come to the building as opposed to embrace it. I mean, I've gotten that sort of feedback. And then from the Ocean City perspective, I guess, I just think of it as the experience of the voter or the resident is, I go there and I do this at this location, I have to drive there, you know, Ocean City's way spread out, especially the convention center is way far from people's houses in many circumstances. So they take that inconvenient trip. And I think that's the same experience that our people, some would be walking, some would be driving to one of their four locations. And we would have the inconvenience and the burden of staffing for locations. But from a voter's perspective, the inconvenience would be the same or maybe less because it's the same thing they do in every other even year. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm unsure about that.
Given the lateness of the hour, can I, can I just suggest one thing? Because I think all of this logistical issues where we could debate till dawn, because we're not going to, right, we're not going to know the answers to this. Not that I'm not saying these aren't good questions, but there's a lot of these questions and we know this. This is what we've been trying to get the answer to. I think what's on the table, and the city clerk and Ms. Abbott could correct me if I'm wrong, is we sort of need to start this process of moving forward. And as Councilmember Malle, I think, suggested, there's probably other things in our charter that pertain to our elections that do not need to be in our charter. So a first step to move us forward would be to give direction to city staff to have the city attorney review our city charter for two things. One is just in general, what pertains to elections that does not have to be in the charter. And then the second thing is to identify if we are going to continue on this process, what are the things that we would need to change to do that? And if I can get agreement that that's the direction we want to go to give staff, I think that's, that's what we, that's our job for tonight. And then as we move forward, we can continue to have these conversations as we're provided with more information. Yeah.
Can I say, so I think, I mean, I think I agree with what you're saying because what would have to happen is if it's a 90-day process to change the charter in mid to late, well, we're not going to be here in the second half of August, so mid-August is kind of the deadline, that would mean the process of changing the charter, if people decide they want to go forward with it, would have to begin, get underway in mid-May, June, July, August. So basically, between now and then, it's understanding what would have to change in the charter and talking to the state people and maybe Ocean City or whoever about it. So that would just be sort of an information gathering period. That basically.
Yeah, exactly. And we may decide, you know, well, it's good to change the charter for other reasons and the attorney did that and we do that process, but at the end of the day, we decide not to move forward with the synchronization or we decide to do all of it. Is that, I'm looking at the city clerk.
Right, that's right. I had prepared a schedule, I'm sorry to email it. You would pretty much, would have to start week of May 16th with a notice in the newspaper. It goes on from there. The charter would have, amendment would have to be adopted June 22nd in order to allow the 50 days before it becomes effective. So that's what we'd be looking at.
If I could just ask a timing question in looking at this. So presumably, things move ahead, we get direction from the city attorney about what needs to happen, the charter amendment gets started. We submit it by August 27th, but then the state board makes a decision on the request. If they say no, do we then have to go back and change the charter or?
I wouldn't submit, I would not recommend that we submit a request if we don't know what the answer is going to be. I think.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I was just curious. I mean, even if we got the sense that they were working with us and then they surprised us and said, no, I just was checking to see, then we'd have to go back and change the charter to whatever we were planning on doing otherwise. Okay.
And I guess my question on that is, and I'm certainly not an attorney, as some of us aren't, but I don't know if the, if the city charter would have to be changed that it requires you to be with the state, that the change may be enough just to give you the flexibility to do that if we want to.
It didn't sound like we had that option, right?
But couldn't we say the charter change will take effect not in this fall's election, but in the future election so that if they pull the rug out, or whatever you want to call it, we still just do our regular fall election in the normal way? It doesn't really change anything, right? Because it won't affect all these other elections unless we make it do that. And we can, I would think we can make it not do that, right?
We'll have the city attorney look at it. The one, I believe you'd want to set the next election for city council and mayor for one year in 2017, so that would need to have, you would want that to happen. You'd have to schedule for that as well.
Did you do that in, because it would seem strange that the charter said, had this 2017 thing, you know, and 10 years from now, there'd be this little quirky provision.
That's, I think that's how it's done.
Yeah, okay.
But we'll, we'll check, we'll check.
Can I ask a question? I wonder that, about something, and that is that the ballot question that was voted for, basically was to give the city, to ask the city council to consider amending, you know, changing it. It didn't say we absolutely wanted it, wasn't that right?
Read it, it's in front of you. It says, "Beginning with the election in November 2018 and providing that voting rights can be maintained for city residents who are 16 or 17, non-citizens or on parole or probation, and that instant runoff voting and same-day registration can be maintained. The city of Tacoma Park municipal elections for May should be changed." It didn't say.
Okay. I just, okay, thank you. My concern is that it's, I'm just wondering if at some point, as we go through this and we weigh the pros and cons, because there's going to be pros and cons, if we don't need to come back to the community with public hearings or something to kind of get affirmative validation that what we set you off on back in the ballot in November of 2015 is indeed going to be something that we, the citizens of Tacoma Park, the voters of Tacoma Park, want to actually go ahead and do. I mean, at some point, I think we need to come full circle and check.
Well, I mean, I think that's what I was saying. I think I was saying, tonight, if we agree, or at least four of us do, to move forward and ask the city attorney to look into charter changes, then as we're getting information, we'll set work sessions and have a discussion. And that there'll be probably multiple discussions on how we're going to proceed.
And a charter change requires hearings.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So with that, may I see a show of hands on those who agree to have the city attorney review our city charter regarding the elections? One for general changes, two, what needs to be in the charter regarding elections. And the second thing would be to come back to us and tell us what changes need to be made if we decide to move forward with the synchronization. All those in favor? One, two, three, five, sorry. Five in favor. All right. You good? All right. We're adjourned.
Love it, love it, love it!